All right, and I'll call this meeting of the city council to order. Please note that pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 order suspended certain provisions of the open meeting law and the governor's March 15th, 2020 order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place, as well as Mayor Curtis Tony's declaration of emergency dated March 15th, 2020. This meeting of the city council will be conducted via remote participation. We will post an audio recording, audio, video recording, transcript, or other comprehensive record of these proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting on the City of Somerville website and local cable access government channels. Now please rise for the prayer and pledge allegiance.
Mr. President, let's begin this meeting with a prayer. God grant this city council the serenity to accept the things that cannot be changed, the courage to change the things that can be changed, and the wisdom to know the difference. And now let's join in a salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. And Mr. Clerk, will you please call the roll?
This is roll call, Councilor Niedergang.
Here.
Councilor White.
Here.
Councilor Ballantyne.
Present.
Councilor Ewan Campan.
Here.
Councilor Davis.
Here.
Councilor Strezzo.
Present.
Councilor Klingon. Councilor Klingon. I don't record Councilor Klingon as being present, Councilor Mbah.
Present.
Councilor Scott.
Present.
Councilor Rosetti.
Present.
And Councilor McGlaughlin.
Yeah.
Mr. President, 10 councils are present, one is absent, we have a quorum.
Can you hear me now, John?
Up, moments of silence, Councilor Rosetti.
One second, Mr. President, was that Councilor Klingon?
Yes, I fixed my audio, sir, thank you.
All right.
Very good, everyone is present, Mr. President.
Councilor Rosetti.
Thank you, sir. I have the unfortunate honor of asking that we please memorialize this evening Richard Dick Daly, Sr., 94, formerly of Somerville, residing in Florida and passed away unexpectedly. And you might hear 94, he lived a long life, yes, he did, but he was nowhere ready to go to the next life. It was a shock to the family, and he was a fantastic, very active man. He leaves behind his lovely wife, Rose, married for 72 years. He was the devoted father of Richard Doc Daly, Jr., and his wife, Mary, of Somerville, Deborah Ripley and her husband, Charles, Brian Daly and his wife, Deborah, Noreen Stragan and her husband, Glenn, and the late Scott Daly. He also had nine beautiful grandchildren whom he adored, and 14 great-grandchildren. Dick was a member of the American Legion Post 388. He was a veteran of our United States Navy, having served proudly during World War II, and retired, a longtime employee of J.L. Hammett's School Supply Company. In lieu of flowers, the family is asking that donations be made in his memory to St. Clement Parish or to the charity of one's choice. I ask that we please remember Dick this evening. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right, Councilor White would like to be signed on. Do we have any further moments of silence? Councilor Klingon.
Mr. President, thank you. I asked that we all remember Mr. Marshall Mack. Mr. Mack was tragically hit a few weeks ago crossing the street, crossing McGrath Highway. He sadly succumbed to his injuries, he had been in the hospital for some time, and he unfortunately died. I just want everyone to remember his family this evening. He was a Ward 4 resident lifelong, his children grew up here, he was a Vietnam veteran and a prisoner of war, and this is a very tragic accident, and I know some colleagues have more to say on this. I think we're all pretty saddened to hear the news recently that he has passed, so I ask that we remember him.
All right, the entire council would like to sign on to this, and Councilor Niedergang, you have a comment?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I wanted to share some information that Suzanne Wilkinson, a Ward 6 resident, shared with me. Suzanne is on the steering committee of the Somerville Alliance for Safe Streets, and she has been in contact with the family. She wrote, "Mr. Mack leaves his wife, a resident of the housing development, and his son, who is employed at Austin Scientific, and expecting a second child."
Somebody please close your microphones when you're not speaking, please. Go ahead, I'm sorry, Councilor.
Okay, no. Thank you, Mr. President. The driver of the vehicle who fled the scene turned himself in three days later. The traffic offense is not classified as a felony as of now. Mr. Mack, as noted by Councilor Klingon and news coverage, was a veteran of the Vietnam War. It wasn't always made clear, however, that he served in the South Vietnamese Navy, fighting alongside the Americans against the communists. He was a POW for six years. Being on the losing side when the war ended, Mr. Mack and his family left the country as boat people, made possible because Marshall knew how to navigate the seas in the small wooden boat. Pirates took the few belongings and the food and water that they had with them, including the boat's engine, causing the boat to drift for 10 days. Just as hope was giving way to despair, a ship was spotted, which eventually picked them up and took them to Thailand, where they spent a couple of years in a refugee camp, waiting to get a sponsor to come to the U.S. There is a GoFundMe page to help pay for Mr. Mack's funeral expenses, which quite a few members of the Somerville community have contributed to. This individual was a survivor, or somebody who led, obviously, an amazing and extraordinary life, and it's just so, so sad and tragic that he was killed while crossing the street after going shopping in East Somerville. It's just an indescribable tragedy, and I hope we will do, all do everything that we can so that this does not get repeated. Thank you.
All right, do we have any further moments of silence?
I do, Mr. President.
Councilor White?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I'd ask for a moment of silence for Ron Raca. He passed away at 61 years of age in Middle Beach, South Carolina, but he fought cancer for a long, long time. He was born and raised in Somerville, was active in St. Polly Pops Church and in local politics in Ward 4 for a number of years, and even ran for school committee in the 90s. So especially given the long-term battle that he had with cancer, I would ask that he be on our thoughts this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any further moments of silence? I do have one moment of silence for John Sivaldo of 28 Brook Street, of the famous Sivaldo family that is well-known, especially in East Somerville. John was born in December of 1968, attended Somerville High School, is a lifelong Somerville resident. He has a passion for detailing cars and specialized in what he called the Q-Tip Special. He loved to play music, classic vinyl tracks, and could always be heard. If you go on Brook Street, there's no mistake in which house is the Sivaldo House. My heart goes out to him and his family in these trying times. Now, please rise for moments of silence. Please be seated. Mr. Clerk, please read the next item.
Item number three is the approval of the minutes for the regular meeting of April 8th.
All right, this item will be laid on the table for approval, and before we move on, there are a few items that people have asked to take out of order. We're going to go through items 1 through 5, and then we have item 103, Councilor Strezzo would like to take out of order regarding advancement of women's issues. We have a late order from Councilor Ballantyne regarding Tufts employment issues. I'm going to take the Finance Committee, item number 30, out of order to deal with the eminent domain of the Armory. And then we had a request from the Solicitors' Office to take items 107 and 108 out of order, which is regarding outside counsel. Are there any other items that are missing that councilors would like to take out of order? Here and none, please read up. Yes, here and none, please proceed to the next item.
Item number four is a citation submitted by Councilor Klingon and the mayor commending Eleanor Colleen, who is retiring after 35 years of loving service as a foster parent.
Councilor Klingon.
Mr. Chair, this is going to be one of my highlights as a counselor. It is a great, it's a great, somebody's getting some feedback. It's a great honor for me to be able to, to give Eleanor Colleen this citation this evening, though Ellie is, you know, she's an extremely special person. She's somebody who opened her door to people, to children in need, and it's, my mother was a foster parent, they were part of a small network of Somerville foster parents, but they all kind of stayed in touch and knew what was going on, and there was a community there. What also was special about the Somerville foster parents is that they often ended up with children that were from Somerville. So friends of mine had gone through Ellie's house, or even friends of mine in school would come through my own house, and it made it so that they weren't displaced. They didn't end up not only out of their home, but in another city. And it didn't matter if it was one night or 10 years, which Ellie had some long-term, long-term children living with her, she made everybody feel welcome. And, you know, I don't know, I know from being on the other side, what it's, seeing those children come through the door and, you know, just not knowing what to expect, and to have a warm, kind-hearted person like Eleanor Colleen to greet you, it must have just lit people up and warmed their hearts. So, and we're talking thousands of children through the years, affected just so many lives, I can't imagine the impact that she's had in 35 years, but I am really honored to present this this evening, and I wish her all the best in her retirement as a parent. You know, you foster children, but essentially, you know, it's, it's a commitment that if you're going to do it and do it right, everybody feels welcome in your home, and so I'm really, really honored to introduce Eleanor. I hope she'll say a few words, she might be camera shy, but if you could unmute Marion Walz, who is with Ellie, Ellie is, which she go by, if one of the clerks could unmute Marion Walz.
Well, Councilor Klingon would like to sponsor Marion Walz and Eleanor Colleen to speak. Seeing no objection, I will unmute you, Marion, and you're unmuted on my side.
Hi, everyone. So I'm sitting here with Eleanor and just, she is the most special, one of very special foster parents. I've known her my entire career as a social worker, and she has been such a pleasure to work with and really cared about kids, and they still come to her home when they need her or just to say hi, and that compassion is unmatched by many people. She's just done such a service to so many children, especially to the children of Somerville.
Jesse, I'm speechless for once. Your words and your kindness and you thinking of me in this way means the world to me. I loved your mom, and we shared this journey together. I've enjoyed my life as a foster parent. It's been wonderful. Like you said, I still hear from all the children, Mother's Day brought a lot of phone calls and emails, and it was all good and all beautiful. I want to thank the City of Somerville, and I want to thank you especially, Jesse, for you, for doing, you know, making awareness of foster care too, because there's such a need for all foster parents. Thank you, thank you, and I truly appreciate this citation. Thank you.
Thank you, Eleanor. Thank you, Marion, as well, and back to you, Mr. President.
All right, on the item, we have, we have Councilor Mbah, and the entire council would like to sign on to this as well. Councilor Mbah, you have a comment?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I appreciate you signing the entire council. I just want to say thank you to Eleanor, because as somebody also grew up with a foster parent, I know exactly that feeling. You know, we live in a society where people are always, you know, trying to amass this, there's always the notion that it's never enough, but having people, you know, who would take others as their own and bring out the best in them, is no other feeling, you know, more rewarding than that. So I just want to say thank you, Eleanor, and God bless you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Councilor Strezzo.
Good comment. Thank you, thank you very much. Very inspired and inspiring woman, and that's all.
All right, any further comments? Seeing none, this item is laid on the table for approval.
Item number 103, then, Mr. President, is a communication from the mayor submitting a proclamation for women's advancement, equity, and opportunity in Somerville.
Councilor Strezzo.
Thank you. This is, this proclamation came out of the women's resolution I wrote and submitted in February of this year, and that was prompted based on the fact that women reported all the job loss claims in January of 2021, just quick stats, and during the pandemic, women lost three decades worth of progress in the span of less than a year. One of the reasons is because women were employed most predominantly in the hardest-hit industries of the pandemic, restaurant, hospitality, and retail, and women cut back on their jobs three times the rate of their male peers, and that's why, what prompted me to write this. So this proclamation, which I've been working on with the administration and various city departments and commissions, is just one step of many that we can take in Somerville to help its validation to the women caregivers, parents, guardians, and families in Somerville, that you're seen, you're valued, and you're heard. And we've seen what you've been through in these past year and a half, and is my goal that we can guide us out of this process together and build up from what we've all experienced. We're building out of this negative impact. So this proclamation is one step of many, and it creates a foundation with, for mentorship opportunities, job transition programs, the way I envision it, but of course, we want to listen to our community of what, what everyone wants, with more realistic childcare options, creating bridges for women into the trades industries, prioritizing institutional racism. And so, like I mentioned, we've been collaborating, I've been collaborating on the action items, and this is a continuous breathing process in some of the departments that I and have been working with and various departments that will have hopefully a stake, and this is just a few, working together alongside is the Economic Development Office, the Childcare Working Group, the Job Creation and Retention Trust Fund, the Somerville Commission for Women, and of course, Ms. Denise Willing Capers, our Racial and Social Justice Director. We have so much work to do to right these wrongs, and we need Somerville to help with ideas, and so I ask very much for everyone's input on this, and so we can build out of this experience together. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any discussion on the item? Here and none, this item is laid on the table for approval. Next item.
Sorry, Mr. President, we move next to item number five, which is a resolution submitted by Councilor McGlaughlin that the month of May 2021 is hereby declared to be Older Americans Month.
Well, the younger the city gets, the older I feel, and I'm sure some of my older colleagues will understand what I'm saying there. It is Older Americans Month, and I would like to sponsor Ashley Spalotis from the city, the Council on Aging, to discuss this item. I see the entire council would like to sign on to this, and I'm going to recognize Ashley. Ashley, you're unmuted on my side. You there, Ashley? You might have to unmute yourself. There you go. I see your microphone is green, you should be able to speak. Ashley? Going once, going twice. Let's lay this on the table in the hopes that we can get Ashley back. John, Mr. Clerk, you mentioned there were two other residents that might have wanted to speak on this, maybe we can go to them? Can people hear me?
Yes, no, we can hear you, Mr. President. One second while I track down those two other speakers.
We just lost Ashley. Oh, there's Ashley again. Can you hear us, Ashley? There we go, hey. Sounds like you're still muted, though. Still muted.
It might be that she needs to reengage with her microphone in the little setting.
Yeah, it's my microphone, Ashley. Somebody sent me a text earlier that this is, remote meetings are like a seance. I'm trying to summon Ashley to speak. We can't hear you on our end, Ashley. We can see you but not hear you. John, do you have those other names?
Shoot, no, I don't have it right yet. Hold on, keep looking.
We'll come back to this, I'll lay it on the table right now, and we'll go to the next item.
In that case, Mr. President, that brings us, I believe, to the late item that was submitted by Councilor Ballantyne, which is a resolution regarding the Tufts Labor Coalition, supporting the Tufts Labor Coalition, and students standing in solidarity with the Tufts dining workers.
All right, Council Ballantyne.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just, you know, want to say that I really admire many of the young people who live in our community, and certainly the students up at Tufts University. They have had the back of the dining workers, who are in many ways, they're relationships of, you know, family, people who care about them, who acknowledge them every, every day, and the students and the Tufts Labor Coalition have wanted to seek our request for support in their advocacy for the dining workers. And this evening, I'd like to sponsor David Boulay-Gercott to speak. He's a sophomore at Tufts University on behalf of this resolution. Mr. President, if you could.
All right, Council Ballantyne, sponsor David to speak, seeing no objection. David, you're unmuted on my side. Might have to unmute yourself, David. You know, we've been doing this for a year, you'd think it'd get easier. David, are you there? Can you hear us? You might have to unmute the button on your side of the computer. Going once, going twice. Up, David, are you there? I see your microphone is green. All right, I'm going to lay this one on the table in the hopes that we can get David back. So, Council Ballantyne, maybe text me if you can, if you see him back.
Yeah, I think that, I don't want to say, it might be at our end, in part because I've gotten a few texts from people who are viewing this, that they, the screens were black at one point, then it came back, so I'll ask him to send me his comments, and maybe I can read them for him. Thank you.
Yeah, I see that he's in the red again, so I'm going to unmute one more time just to see. That camera issue was with the cable access channel, so I don't think it had to do with this, but David, one more shot, for good luck. Nope, no luck. Okay, we'll lay this on the table and maybe come back to it. Next item, please.
Mr. President, that brings us up to item number 30, which is a report of the Committee on Finance, which met on May 3rd.
All right, Councilor Scott. My God, I hope this is just that you're unmuted, that you're on.
I'm just messing with you, sir.
There we go.
So, all right, the committee met on May 3rd, all members were present. There is one item that I was recused from, so if you'd like to sever that before accepting the report, if that's appropriate, otherwise I can deliver the minutes as recorded when Council Ballantyne was running the meeting.
Okay, you want to sever, can you tell us which item you want to sever?
Sure, we'll sever, move to sever 211731, and then I'd ask, after the conclusion of the report, that Council Ballantyne report out that item.
Okay, on severing the item, any discussion? Here and none, Mr. Clerk, please call the roll on severing the item.
On severing that item from the Finance Committee report, Councilor Niedergang. Councilor White.
Yes.
Councilor Ballantyne.
Yes.
Councilor Ewan Campan.
Yes.
Councilor Davis.
Yes.
Councilor Strezzo.
Yes.
Councilor Klingon.
Yes.
Councilor Mbah.
Yes.
Councilor Scott.
Yes.
Councilor Rosetti.
Yes.
And Councilor McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Mr. President, all of them, councils have voted in favor of severing that item. That item is now severed from the balance of the report.
All right, and could someone please send Council Ballantyne the committee report so she can read the severed item, and Councilor Scott, please proceed.
All right, outside of that item, there were several appropriations. There was an appropriation of $200,000 from Capital Stabilization Fund. This is to fund some interim traffic and safety improvements, pedestrian safety improvements at Powderhouse Circle. It was discussed, Councilor Rosetti in particular expressed concern for Doherty Funeral Home, and it does not appear that any parking spaces would be removed in the vicinity of Doherty Funeral Home, and Director Ross said that they're working on outreach right now. After this appropriation, there will be about $3.15 million left in the stabilization We had a very educational conversation with the Fire Department Chief, Chief Breen. Some concern had been raised in the community, some social media posts about the status of our, about our fire safety equipment in the city. I must say, personally, I found the chief to be incredibly well-informed and detail-oriented in terms of his report. As it turns out, the average ABR fire apparatus is only seven and a half years old. Several apparatus was out of service because of, for example, a busted spring. We've got a lot of potholes in the city, and that this equipment was generally out for only a matter of days. He had much praise for his chief of maintenance and the entire maintenance staff there, and noted that we're usually the ones that loan out equipment to other cities. So with concerns reassured, that one is marked as work completed. There was also related to fire, a discussion about the potential sighting of a fire station in the Assembly Square neighborhood. This is for folks who are not aware, you know, we've been asking about the concern about sighting a fire station there, the city council has for several years now. This is a plan to use the first floor of a parking garage in a newly proposed building over there to be a two-bay fire station. Unlike all the other fire stations in the city, this would be a leased property, and right now. And right now, the proposal is for about $860,000 a year for the 10,000 square foot space with an increase of 2% each year for a 30-year lease. The the challenge is whether or not, there were questions asked by the committee about whether or not that could be a purchased location so that we would not have leased station. We'd have to renegotiate in 30 years. There was conversation about about fire safety in general and how fires are fought in those kind of high-density buildings. But ultimately, the concerns raised by several members of the committee related to both, A, the sighting of a fire station inside a large mixed-use building. In this case, it's a parking garage attached to a commercial building. And how we might also proceed in that manner with future fire stations and also the ultimate ownership or leasing arrangement on it. The discussion was simply there for an informational purpose. And it is anticipated by Mr. Galligani, Director Galligani, that he'll be bringing a proposal to the City Council sometime in the near future to, for deliberation. There was also much discussion on the two orders of taking that were before us. Those two items, one was related to the taking of the Armory. That's 191 Highland Avenue. There was discussion from, and a presentation from a consultant that had been hired by the city to talk about the economic operation of the space. Some look into how that space would be self-sustainable in the future. There was discussion about a butter's concerns from previous meetings about soundproofing of the property. And most of the work is already completed on that. And ultimately, there was some brief discussion amongst members of the committee, at which point it was unanimously moved for approval, both the order of taking itself and the bond of roughly $5 million to fund that acquisition. So I'm very, very happy to report that one out. The final item that I'll be putting in the report tonight is discussion on the taking of 9 to 11 Aldersley Street. There was significant discussion on this item as well. This is, as everyone's still familiar, a three-family house that sits on a very large piece of property on Aldersley Street. The principal and interest on this would be $230,000 a year for a 20-year term. So total cost to the city of about $4.6 million. Various counselors had questions about that amount of money and about its impact on debt service and concerns about the use of eminent domain in this particular case, both with regard to the length of time that this proposal has been under litigation, all of which the city has lost previously, and in terms of the many projects on the capital projects list and a variety of other concerns relating to the financial matters. Counsel White in particular still had some questions he was looking for answers for relating to the tax revenue that would be lost due to taking this property going forward. Director Broeck has had intended to get us information for our next Finance Committee meeting. Unfortunately, that Finance Committee meeting was canceled. So this item is still in committee. I anticipate that there will be discussion of it at our next meeting, which is scheduled for May 25th, at which point I expect to be voted with a recommendation for the City Council. So both the taking of 911 Aldersley and $3.5 million bond for the taking remained in committee with several reservations and a request, several requests for information from Counsel White. I will note that during that meeting, we did enter an executive session for the purposes of discussing the valuation of the property and the appraisal, as well as litigation strategy related to anticipated lawsuits. With that, I would ask that the severed committee report be accepted. Thank you.
All right, Counsel Scott moves to accept the committee report. Any discussion? Here are none. Let's do a roll call vote on accepting the committee report.
On acceptance of the committee report, with the exception of the single severed item. Counselor Niedergang.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Ballantyne.
Yes.
Counselor Ewan Campen.
Yes.
Counselor Davis.
Yes.
Counselor Strezzo.
Yes.
Counselor Klingon.
Yes.
Counselor Mbah.
Yes.
Counselor Scott.
Yes.
Counselor Rosetti.
Yes.
And Counsel McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Mr. President, all of them, councils have voted in favor of approving the committee report. It has been approved.
Okay, so we have a few votes in this committee report in relation to the Armory, on the bond for the Armory, as well as the seizure and the stabilization fund. Am I correct, Mr. Clerk?
That is correct, Mr. President.
We're going to take up all votes separately. And Counsel Scott moves to approve the bond. And any discussion on anything related to the Armory before we move forward? Here are none. Please call the roll.
Mr. President, let me call the roll first on item number 211686, which is the order of taking for 191 Highland Avenue. On the order of taking, Counselor Niedergang.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Ballantyne.
Yes.
Counselor Ewan Campen.
Yes.
Counselor Davis.
Yes.
Counselor Strezzo.
Yes.
Counselor Klingon.
Yes.
Counselor Mbah.
Yes, please.
Counselor Scott.
Yes.
Counselor Rosetti.
Yes.
And Counsel McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Mr. President, with all 11 counselors in favor, that order of taking has been approved.
All right, on the next vote.
Now, on the next item, 211687, which bonds $5,575 for the purchase of that parcel, 191 Highland Avenue. On the bond, Counselor Niedergang.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Ballantyne.
Yes.
Counselor Ewan Campen.
Yes.
Counselor Davis.
Yes.
Counselor Strezzo.
Yes.
Counselor Klingon.
Yes.
Counselor Mbah.
Yes.
Counselor Scott.
Yes.
Counselor Scott, oh, very good, got it. And Counselor Rosetti?
Yes.
And Counsel McGlaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. President, again, with all 11 counselors in favor, that bond has been approved.
All right, next vote.
The next vote, the last vote at this point, is on item number 211733, which appropriates $200,000 from the Capital Stabilization Fund for interim safety improvements at Powderhouse Circle. On that item, Counselor Niedergang.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Ballantyne.
Yes.
Counselor Ewan Campen.
Yes.
Counselor Davis.
Yes.
Counselor Strezzo.
Yes.
Counselor Klingon.
Yes.
Counselor Mbah.
Yes.
Counselor Scott.
Yes.
Counselor Rosetti.
Yes.
And Counsel McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Mr. President, with all 11 counselors have voted in favor, that appropriation from the stabilization fund has been approved.
Okay, do we have any more votes?
No, there's just the item that's been laid on the table, which is item number 211731, coming out of the Finance Committee, severed item.
Counsel Ballantyne, are you prepared for that?
Yes, Mr. President.
All right, Counsel Ballantyne.
Thank you, Mr. President. So this was item 211731, requesting the appropriation of $2,718,676.20 from the receipt reserve sale of real estate account to the debt services. So just a quick way to share with you colleagues, I believe it was in 2012 when the city said they would take lands around Union Square for eminent domain. And D2 parcel was one of those. And it was, as I understood it, it was it was purchased for over $18 million. And we had a the city had received from the sale this amount of money, which state law and the IRS requires to pay off the principal and interest and will remove the debt from the city. Mr. Bean stated that the city is setting aside the amount of money required to pay down the debt service, which is about $9 million, a little over $9 million, to pay off other assets of debt service. So that is what this is. It's to pay off the debt service for the, or some of the debt service for the D2 parcel. So I move that this is approved.
All right, Counsel Ballantyne moves for approval. Any discussion? Mr. Clerk, do we need a vote on this besides the approval of the report?
Mr. President, the report was approved except for this item. So this item is before the council now, as a standalone item, it could be voted on now or it could be rolled into a combined vote later.
Let's lay this on the table for approval and note that Counsel Scott is recused from this item.
Oh, Mr. President?
Yes.
Because Counselor Scott is recused, we should vote on this item separately. I'm sorry, I should have realized that. Ready for a vote?
Yes, please.
On that item that was just presented by Counsel Ballantyne, Counselor Niedergang.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Ballantyne.
Yes.
Counselor Ewan Campen.
Yes.
Counselor Davis.
Yes.
Counselor Strezzo.
Yes.
Counselor Klingon.
Yes.
Counselor Mbah.
Yes.
Counselor Scott. I show Counselor Scott is recused. Counselor Rosetti.
Yes.
And Counsel McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Mr. President, 10 councils have voted in favor of that item. One is recused. That item has been approved.
All right, before we go on, let's take up the Counsel on Aging item. Let's take that back off the table. I'm going to give Ashley one more shot to speak. And if not, we also have Leslie Hergit here to speak. Ashley, are you there?
Yes, Mr. President. Can you hear me okay?
And thankfully.
Sorry about that before. Good evening to you and to the members of the council. Thank you so much for recognizing Older Americans Month is the month of May. Older American months provide the opportunity to reflect on the vital contributions which older adults make to our community and our rich history and lessons and the models of resiliency which they share with us. It's our mission over at the Council on Aging to serve as a welcoming center, which provides comprehensive services to enhance the lives of the older adult population and to enrich the community at large. And while this year has seen many challenges brought forth by COVID, we're very proud to have been able to transition all of our services to virtual formats, by phone, drive-in lunches and handouts. We've also been able to create new services. We started a taxi program, providing 4,000 rides to the members of the Somerville community. We've also been able to bring vaccination clinics with Health and Human Services and the Somerville Housing Authority right to Somerville housing buildings, which has been great. Throughout the past year, we also created card exchanges, goodie bag drop-offs, and we made hundreds of outreach calls each month to try to combat isolation so many of us have felt throughout the past year. And of course, it was all of your, with all of your assistance, that we were able to transition our shelf-stable food program to a home delivery program. So I look forward to continuing to work with each of you to address the needs of older adults in our community during this month and throughout the rest of the year. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'd also like to sponsor Leslie Hergit to speak. Seeing no objection. Leslie, you're unmuted on my side.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Great. Thank you. I'm the president of the Board of Somerville Cambridge Elder Services, which often partners with the Council on Aging and other local organizations to serve elders in Somerville. It's my privilege to serve SES. Since many years ago, my husband Ralph chaired this board and later rebenefited from SES services. As a longtime resident of Somerville, I believe Somerville embodies the Older Americans Act 2021, theme of communities of strength. About 11,000 people in Somerville age 60 or older. And that group ranges widely in its abilities and its needs. This year, we saw both the vulnerability of older adults and also our resiliency. And I say "our" because I am one. SES has helped care for and sustain older adults through services such as Meals on Wheels, providing rides to vaccine sites, regular friendly calls to isolated adults, and consultations, often virtual, to help people stay safely in their homes, which 90% of older adults say they prefer. Many of our programs are provided at no cost to reduced rates. And we invite anyone facing challenges of aging, caregiving, or disability to contact us for free advice and guidance. Thank you for celebrating Older Americans Month and also for all you do to engage and support elders as a vital constituency in Somerville.
Thank you very much. Is there any further discussion on this item? Counsel Ewan Campen.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you very much for putting this in. I just want to offer my thanks to the Council on Aging and Cambridge-Somerville Elder Service. This, the past year, needless to say, has just been incredibly, incredibly difficult. And specifically, it's been, I think, really, really hard for all of us that wish we could spend more time with our elder neighbors. And so much of the work that you do is kind of behind the scenes. And so I'm really glad that we have a chance to honor the work you've been doing tonight. And I hope that going forward, we all keep in mind just how critical all this work has been. So thank you all very much.
Thank you. And the entire council has already signed on to this item. Any further discussion? Here are none. This item is laid on the table for approval.
Mr. President, there's one other item laid on the table, which is the Tufts Labor Coalition item. Or should we proceed next to the next item on the agenda that we had talked about?
Any luck there, Counsel Ballantyne?
Yes, Mr. President. He's made it on, so we're gonna.
Let's try again. David, are you there?
Yes, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Perfect, sorry. I think the problem is my computer. I'm on my phone now. Okay, well, thank you, President McGlaughlin. My name is David Boulay-Ghercut. I'm a sophomore at Tufts University and a member of the Tufts Labor Coalition, a student organizing group committed to promoting community and solidarity between students and campus workers. I first want to acknowledge Counselor Ballantyne, who submitted this resolution. The Tufts Labor Coalition greatly appreciates her passionate and unwavering support. As many of you likely remember, Counselor Ballantyne submitted a resolution in 2019 supporting a fair union contract for Tufts dining workers, a resolution which the entire council signed on to. We would greatly appreciate if the council could support our advocacy now, just as it did then. When I first came to Tufts, the image I had was of an institution dedicated to social justice and which lived up to the values it preached. Two years later, I can say with confidence that this is far from being the case. The administration's behavior towards its dining workers speaks volumes and reveals that Tufts rhetoric of being committed to social justice is just that. As a member of the Tufts Labor Coalition, I learned about the climate of manager harassment and retaliation that plagues dining services, as well as the university's shameful track record for addressing workplace grievances. The COVID-19 pandemic has also led the administration to show its true colors. For example, until fairly recently, dining workers who tested positive for COVID had to use their own sick time to quarantine, a policy which put the entire Tufts community at risk. And as a student worker in one of the campus cafes, I learned from one of the I learned from one of the dining workers about how she had to fight just to get time off to bury her husband, who had passed away from COVID. And I also learned about the issue addressed by the resolution before you, which spells out the details in which I'm sure you've read. Keeping workers in the dark and potentially leaving them without any source of income in the middle of a pandemic is a display of blatant disregard for the well-being of Tufts dining workers. I think I speak on the behalf of all Tufts students when I say that the dining workers are a bright spot of every day on campus. I know that for myself. Every time one of the workers thinks to save me a panini for after my shift, it really makes my day. They are some of the kindest, hardest-working people there are, and they make Tufts feel like a real community. They've continued to work hard and keep the university running in the midst of the worst crisis of our lifetimes, even as student cases, even as student cases spiked on campus, putting them at risk. They deserve dignity and respect as much as any Tufts student or professor, and they certainly do not deserve to be left high and dry in the middle of a pandemic. On behalf of the Tufts Labor Coalition, I ask that the council support our advocacy for the Tufts dining workers. And I hope that this resolution will be a small step in pushing the Tufts administration to live up to the values it preaches. Thank you for your time. And once again, thank you to Counsel Ballantyne for her support.
And it's the Counsel Strezzo and Davis would like to sign on. Ewan Campen, any further discussion? Here are none. I will just weigh in as the whole council looks like they want to sign on. Just want to weigh in both as a Tufts alum and as a brother of a employee at Harvard University, where Harvard took care of all their employees, at least in terms of security guards and union members there, took care of them throughout the pandemic and did not lay anyone off and made sure to pay them, even if they weren't able to work. I think Harvard did this, and Tufts should be able to do the same and support their employees, who have all gone through a really tough time. We've made a lot of sacrifices. And I think Tufts needs to make that sacrifice, just like the rest of us have. Any further discussion? The whole council has signed on. Seeing none, this item is laid on the table for approval.
Mr. President, I believe that brings us up to item number 107, which is a communication submitted by the city solicitor who's requesting approval to retain Brody, Hardoun, Perkins and Keston as outside counsel in Dante DeFranzo v. Somerville at L.
Could you read item number 108 as well?
Certainly. Item 108 is a communication from the city solicitor requesting approval to retain KP Law as outside counsel, the civil service bypass appeal of Matthew Fairchild.
Okay, so we have the solicitor Wright here to discuss this item. I'm gonna, with no objection, I'm gonna let him explain this item. And then if people have questions, we can discuss that. Mr. Wright?
Thank you, Mr. President. Frank Wright, city solicitor. Yes, we were served this week with two actions. One was the DeFranzo versus City of Somerville, Mayor Tony Omichief Fallon and former Captain Carter. That is a action essentially for wrongful termination. It is filed in Milsec's Superior Court. We're recommending that we hire Brody, Hardoun, Perkins and Keston, who this council, we call, has approved in the past to represent the city. It's been very successful. Remember the soccer camp case? Also has a case now pending that we want summary judgment on. It's been appealed. Also is a couple of other matters pending. Still, our office right now has one attorney out on long-term personal leave. And we will be losing, unfortunately, one of our good attorneys in the coming weeks. So that is the reason why I'm seeking this. But we also have been served this week with a bypass appeal at the Civil Service Commission that relates to an appointment by the mayor and a decision not to confirm by this city council. We're proposing KP Law in that matter be retained, similar to in past instances where we faced the same circumstances as to an appointment not being confirmed.
All right, any discussion? Counselor White, did you have something more, the solicitor?
No, I was just gonna say, and I mean, both are somewhat time-sensitive. There was a pre-hearing in civil service. In mid-June, any matter in the court system is subject to court rules. Answers must be filed in a timely fashion. Discovery commences. So again, with us being down staff, I'd like to get these assigned out sooner rather than later.
All right, any discussion? Counsel White?
Thank you, Mr. President. Pro you to the city solicitor. What is the hourly rate that's going to be charged for the firm that's representing us in item number 107?
The hourly rate is for partners, $250 an hour. Associates, $200 an hour. Paralegals, $100 an hour.
Who the president? That sounds like it's a discounted rate?
Yeah, that's consistent. They do a lot of municipal work, and that's their municipal rate, exactly.
Okay, thank you, Mr. President.
All right, any further discussion? Do I hear a motion to approve?
I'll move.
Counsel White moves to approve the two items. Any discussion? Here are none. Let's do a roll call vote on both items.
Mr. President, this is a roll call vote on the approval of item numbers 107 and 108. On those two requests for outside counsel, Counselor Niedergang?
Yes.
Counselor White?
Yes.
Counselor Ballantyne?
Yes.
Counselor Ewan Campen?
Yes.
Counselor Davis?
Yes.
Counselor Strezzo?
Yes.
Counselor Klingon?
Yes.
Counselor Mbah?
Yes.
Counselor Scott?
Yes.
Counselor Rosetti?
Yes.
And Counsel McGlaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. President, all 11 councils have voted in favor. Both those requests for outside counsel have been approved.
All right, thank you, Frank.
Thank you, Mr. President.
All right, next item, Mr. Clerk?
Mr. President, we return to the regular order of business. We moved item number six, which is a resolution submitted by Counselor McGlaughlin and Counselor Ewan Campen, Counselor Davis, Counselor Niedergang and Counselor Scott, supporting a public-private partnership for the public safety building plan.
Counselor Ewan Campen?
Mr. President, as it is your ward, I'd be happy to yield to you to speak first, if you'd like.
Oh, I always like speaking last, so you can go ahead, Counselor.
All right, well, I will say this. As the council member who's currently serving on the SRA, we've been getting relatively, essentially monthly updates on the 90 Washington Project. But I will say that the details of those updates have been very, very thin. And kind of the sense of exactly where the project is and what the considerations are, really, we have not seen until the public meeting on this project. And at the time that the council was considering whether to move forward with the demonstration project, the council was very clear that we want to see on this piece of land both a public safety building and also as much residential and commercial space as possible. So at our last SRA meeting, I raised the idea of whether it is possible to have housing or potentially commercial space on top of the public safety building. And the answer that we got was basically, this has not been considered. It seemed kind of unlikely to be considered. And that concerned me because this is one of the few, now publicly owned, pieces of land, again, that we have right next to a new train station. And I think it's really critical. I want to be respectful of how complex it is to design a public safety building. But I think this, we're not going to get a lot of opportunities like this. And I think it is essential that we are as creative as possible and that we don't get ourselves in a situation where we've built a new public safety building and all of the rest of what we want there, the housing, the possible commercial space, the can is kicked on those. And, you know, 10 to 15 years from now, a new council is wondering why that never happened. So, you know, I really want to support Counselor McGlaughlin's, the urgency that he is bringing to this issue. And I just want to say, I think, the time to plan for the residential and the commercial is now. We need to see that this plan is being taken seriously and that all the possibilities are being explored in order to move forward with this. So I'm thankful to co-sponsor this. I will certainly be working on it on the SRA side and on the council side. Thank you.
All right, I see a few comments and questions. Before that, I guess I'll weigh in in case I can answer those questions. So, you know, we seized this property at 90 Washington Street for the purposes of a public safety building. I had, I fully supported that and still support it to this day because I think it's a blighted lot that is very important to the neighborhood and really got tired of waiting for the developers to make money for themselves and do what was right on that property. We waited eight years for that property to get built, and nothing ever happened. We identified this as a site for the public safety building, and this is something I support. I think we need a new home for our firefighters and police officers and other departments or issues we may want to address there as well. So it's very important to me that we have a new public safety building, but it is not the only thing that's important to me. And that land is very important for the redevelopment of East Somerville. There is a train station going right there. It has been a long-neglected part of the neighborhood, and just a public safety building isn't good enough for me. I did speak to representatives from the city about this, so I was able to temper my frustrations. And I think I got the message across that we would like, we want to plan for this location. And we want it before we make really serious decisions regarding the public safety building. Because my fear is that we approve the public safety building, and then we get promised everything else later. But we have a lot of projects in the city. There's a lot of sites that need to be developed. And this could just be one of many sites that get lost in the mix. So it's really important to me for us to get answers on the long-term plan of the site outside of just the public safety building. I am going to refer this to the Finance Committee because I don't want this decision to be made in a vacuum. And I want everyone to have, to be able to weigh in because it's a very important decision. So I see, let's see, where I got? I got Counsel Klingon, White. No, no, that's an old one. Hold on. Counsel White, Klingon, David. Now, Counsel White and Klingon would like to sign on. I have a comment from Counsel Scott and Ballantyne and Davis. So Counsel Scott?
Thank you, Mr. President. My, my passion on this item has not been tempered because I share the grave concerns. At first, I'd like to thank Counselor, my colleague from Word Three, for his dedication and diligence in the SRA. This is exactly the reason why we changed the way the SRA is appointed so that we have representation on there. And I think this is a splendid example of why that was important. We have here on this site a very clear mandate from the city council in all of our conversations. And since day one, I know you, Mr. President, myself and several others have talked about the need to develop this site to its highest and best, not to simply build a cop shop and a fire station. The needs of this city are immense for both public space and for development. That's development for housing. That's development for commercial development and tax revenues. It's development for additional office space, accessible office space and space for services for city residents. This site, sitting right next to a transit stop, would be unacceptably underdeveloped. And I was shocked to hear the feedback from city staff that, no, we're not really looking at it. It's unacceptable. And I know I certainly would not be voting in favor of any bond for any kind of plan that fell so short. As with, as has been said before, you know, we are in a tight bond when it comes to public safety building, given the commitments that the city, that the mayor signed with the master developer in Union Square to hand over the existing station, which admittedly is in disrepair and is not a healthy building. But the fact that we've already committed to passing that on without planning for the future puts us in a situation, once again, where, as the president has frequently spoken about, the sword of Damocles is dangled over the entire city of Somerville and placed in the city council's lap for immediate action that quite frankly falls short of the city's needs. So I could not be more full-throated in my advocacy for a bigger plan. And again, to think creatively. There are so many needs and so many opportunities for our city to do better here that there is no way that I will stand for aiming low on this project. So I appreciate this resolution. Obviously, already signed on to it. And appreciate the dedication of my colleagues to seeing the sun right. Thank you.
We have Counsel Ballantyne and Davis.
Thank you, Mr. President. I guess one thing I'm just not clear on is the why. And I just, it's, there's just, we're not gonna take it into consideration because I know there were long discussions. I totally supported the idea of this being a demonstration project because we were going to think out of the box on this. But I'm unclear on to the why. What is holding us back? I mean, there's so many creative solutions that could happen with this and even putting affordable housing there, going in with a developer. I mean, just, I'm not clear on the why. I'm happy to sign on to it. My name is not on there. I would like to sign on, but I'm still not clear on the why.
Counsel Ballantyne would like to sign on. And I would just answer, I would say, from talking to the city today, right before this meeting, they have not said no, but they haven't said yes. And in my experience, you know, unless we have a yes before we play our role in voting for the bonds and voting for the, moving this project forward, unless we have a yes before that, I can't imagine getting a yes after the fact. They have expressed concerns about building a mixed use on the public safety building itself. And I would rather let them discuss that in the Finance Committee because it's complicated. But I definitely did reiterate the fact that I want to see a plan before we make a decision on the public safety building, not afterwards. And I know that one of the answers I got was that we need a public safety building soon, but we've needed it for several years now. And I don't think it's good enough to say that we, that we need to speed this up without a full plan. I want a full plan, and it's not just about myself or about the safety of the community. It's also about the long-term plan of the city. And I know the council went to great lengths to make sure that this can be more than a public safety building. And I think that hopefully our voice is heard and hopefully the budget hawks in the finance committee can address this.
Thank you, Mr. President.
And I'll also add too that there are public safety building meetings that are open to the public. They usually held on Wednesdays once a month, and they, the videos should be posted so people from the public and on this council can watch these public safety meetings as well. So I want to make sure that, again, we will play a large role in this as a council. And Counsel Davis?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I'll be really brief because I, you know, for the most part, my comments have been made. I sort of share the same confusion, I think, that Counsel Ballantyne expressed in asking the question why. I, I don't, I don't understand how to reconcile all of the conversations that we had about this property and the position that you're conveying that the administration expressed to you now. This was like the whole point, not the whole point, but it was, you know, we had a plan. This is what we're gonna do. This demonstration project was commended, you know, from outside the city. So I, I share the concerns and fully support this, and I, I agree that we need to, you know, if, if we can't wait to have a public safety building, then let's not sit and argue about whether we're gonna have a bigger plan. Let's just have the bigger plan now. Like, let's go. So, thank you.
All right, any further discussion? Here, none. The sign was laid on the table for approval with a copy sent to the finance committee.
Item number seven is a resolution submitted by Counselor Mbah, Scott, Ewan Campen and Klingon. Standing, standing, I'm, I'm sorry, and the entire council, everyone has signed on to this item. Support, standing in solidarity of the Mass Nurses Association, nurses campaigning for fair contract negotiations with the Cambridge Health Alliance.
Counsel Mbah.
Thank you, Mr. President. I appreciate the entire council signing on to it. Now, during the pandemic, nurses have put their lives at risk daily, walking around the clock to treat COVID patients without hesitation or concern for their well-being. In the face of unprecedented challenges and with their health at risk, nurses were unflinching. So, and we have honored these nurses with names like healthcare heroes. But amid the pandemic, not everyone stood with our healthcare heroes. As nurses, in some of it, were risking getting infected, also throughout the state with COVID to save lives, CHA refused to meet with nurses concerned about their work conditions and an inadequate supply of personal protective equipment. And now again, CHA is refusing to pay retroactive pay increases to the nurses who put their lives on the line to protect our community. So I'm offering this resolution to show that, you know, that we as a city council stand in solidarity with these nurses who have risked their lives. And we urge CHA to begin in good faith with these nurses and give them the protection and benefits that they have more than earned. So John, would you mind reading the resolution?
Certainly, through, through the chair. This is a resolution about the Mass Nurses Association and the Cambridge Health Alliance nurses working towards new contracts. Whereas in January 2019, local nurses who are members of the Mass Nurses Association Union began negotiations with Cambridge Health Alliance to work towards new contracts at three regional locations. Cambridge Hospital, employing 500 nurses, Everett Hospital, employing 200, and Somerville Hospital, employing 60. And whereas in the wake of the outbreak of COVID-19, negotiations halted for six months as nurses served on the front lines of the pandemic, saving lives and risking their own, even as they petitioned the Health Alliance for more adequate personal protective equipment. And whereas despite this sacrifice, Cambridge Health Alliance administration has not paid retroactive pay increases that they deserve for their service or settled terms in a number of important issues. And whereas the Cambridge Health Alliance nurses and healthcare professionals have asked for patient assignment limits for charge nurses who are already tasked with coordinating hospital units and their fellow nurses. And whereas Cambridge Health Alliance nurses and healthcare professionals have asked for changes to the nurses' time off accrual systems so that long-serving nurses don't lose their earned time off. And whereas Cambridge Health Alliance nurses and healthcare professionals have asked to join the nurses', the MNA bargaining unit. And whereas, as of May 2020, the Health Alliance received nearly $50 million in federal funding to respond to the COVID-19 pandemic, which should be shared fairly with the nurses who are the ones responding every day with the life-saving care that kept the hospitals going. And whereas, the Cambridge Health Alliance is led by its CEO and governed by a board of trustees, which includes prominent residents from the city of Somerville. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Somerville City Council goes on record standing in solidarity of the Mass Nurses Association nurses campaigning for fair contract negotiations with Cambridge Health Alliance at the Cambridge Hospital, the Everett Hospital and the Somerville Hospital. And be it further resolved that the city council urges the Cambridge Health Alliance administration to begin contract negotiations with the MNA nurses as soon as possible and bargain with them in good faith to meet their demands, which they have more than earned, saving lives and administering treatment at the front line of this pandemic. And be it further resolved that the city clerk be and hereby is requested to forward copies of this resolution to the members of the CHA administration, the state delegation and the Somerville Mass Nurse Association Union Local.
Thank you, John.
Thank you. And on the item, we got Counsel Klingon, Ewan Campen and Ballantyne.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm proud to, thank you, Mr. President. I'm proud to stand with the nurses, proud to stand with all labor. I just wanted to bring the voice of one of my constituents to this, who also is a CHA nurse, who reminds us that this isn't just about the nurses, this is actually the nurses standing up for the other healthcare workers, the pharmacy techs, the midwives, the physical therapists, who all want to join the union and get, have a fair contract. So, so the nurses are really going to bat for all healthcare workers here. And so I just wanted to bring that to the council this evening, and I fully support it. And thank you to Counsel Mbah for bringing this forward, and I'm happy to be a co-sponsor.
Counsel Ewan Campen.
Thank you, Mr. President, and through you, thank you to Counselor Mbah for bringing this. I just wanted to say, over the last couple of weeks, getting to meet and hear directly from so many of the nurses at Somerville Hospital, as they've been doing informational picketing to inform residents about their, their contract struggles right now. And it's been incredibly heartbreaking and also really inspiring to hear directly from these workers. And, you know, also to understand that this is, this is not happening in a vacuum. This is happening across the country, that healthcare workers, this last year has put them in a position where they're being called upon to do, you know, some of the most important work in our society. And at the same time, we have a healthcare industry that very often does not treat them with the dignity on the job that they deserve. And so I just want to, you know, go on record directly to the leadership of CHA, that I'm starting to hear about this from residents in Ward Three who have, you know, who, who walked by this ticket, wanted to know what was going on. And, you know, we are expecting that these negotiations conclude beneficially quickly, you know, and, and, and we are all expecting that and hope that that happens very soon. Thank you.
Counsel Ballantyne.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Counselor Mbah, for putting this in. I'm certainly happy to be a co-sponsor. As the daughter of a union nurse, I absolutely support the CHA nurses and healthcare workers and their union. When I was 11 years old, my mother was diagnosed with stage four ovarian cancer. My mom was the income earner for our family. If anything happened to her, it affected our entire family, not only emotionally, but certainly financially. She had been diagnosed with stage four ovarian cancer. And she had surgery. And about five months later, she learned that her employer, the hospital, wanted to take her health insurance away. I have to repeat, they wanted to take her health insurance away. There was no mass health when I was 11 years old. There was no safety net. And they wanted to take it away because now she had a pre-existing condition, cancer. You can imagine what that did to my mother, never, never mind to my family and certainly her children. Who came and fought for her was the nurses' union. It was an awful time. It was unbearably stressful. I wholly support the nurses and all the healthcare workers. I thank you for putting this in. And they've been through a lot, as we all have, through the pandemic. And in my small part way, you know, I was sewing them face masks because Cambridge Health Alliance let the community know at the beginning that they didn't have the PPE for their nurses or any of their healthcare workers. So I hope they come to a resolution soon. Thank you.
All right, Counsel Davis has asked to sign on, but I believe the whole council has signed on to this. Any further discussion? Here, none. The sign was laid on the table for approval.
Yeah, I just want to thank everybody for speaking and Counsel Ballantyne for sharing that information. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Item's laid on the table for approval.
Item number eight is an ordinance submitted by Counselor White, proposing an ordinance that would require the mayor to annually submit to this council a report on the status of housing.
Counsel White.
Thank you, Mr. President. As my time diminishes for further service on this board, the clock is sort of ticking towards midnight or maybe perhaps towards a new dawn, I'm thinking in my mind, things, you know, from my experience that I think could be tweaked or things that could be implemented. And one of the things that's really happened to this city is a residential concern about our housing stock. What is being produced? What are we doing with affordable housing? So what I thought would be a wise solution would be to require the submission of an annual report. Because what I think is very important is that there'd be substantial data in one document so that residents of the city can look at it, members of the city council can look at it, and you could determine trends. So, and this is sort of a thought process. It would not be, you know, the finished product that I would think and that will be discussed in legislative matters. But what I'm thinking of is in one report, you would have the total number of new residential housing units created, broken down by affordable and market rate units. Then for the affordable units, list the total number of units produced by bedrooms. So you would have X number of one bedroom, X bedroom, X number of two bedrooms, et cetera. Then what I would think is it would be important to look at the total number of former rental units that were converted to condo units, also include the bedroom breakdown. Then we would look at the total number of newly constructed residential condominium units, break them down by units and also market rate units, and do the same for the affordable units. Then when we look at the affordable units, identify the various categories by which they were created. For instance, is it from any city, city funding programs, such as the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, Community Preservation Act funds? Is it done by some of the zoning amendments that we have approved for affordable unit creation? Is it done by the set-aside requirement, you know, the percentage requirement for buildings? So this way, it gives the opportunity over the course of a number of years to see which programs may be working and where there may be the need for improvement. I would also suggest you include in that the number of residential property tax exemptions by category so we can see if we have more residents, people purchasing houses as a resident, or is it more and more absentee landlords purchasing them for income producing? With that, have the demographic breakdown of the residents of this city and the students in the summer school system. So as years go on, you can see, are we losing, you know, students in the school system as a result of the housing that's being created and the lack of affordable units? Now, some of these things are already there, so we have the Affordable Housing Trust Fund report, the Fair Housing Commission, the Community Preservation Plan, and also a report from the House, from the Office of Housing Sustainability. Now, some of those may already have been done, but to put them all in one document so our residents can look at it all in one place. And one of the things that I think is intriguing, and I don't know whether it would be able to be done, but if you could create sort of a benchmark to determine how many affordable units may be lost in the course of a year, whether it's done by income analysis or whatever, I think, you know, we would ask a, a housing staff to look at that. So you could see if basically maybe on income or whatever, you lose, say, 1,000 units and you only produce 200 affordable units, then we're sort of behind as opposed to trying to create new ones. Then what I would ask is that the housing department do a narrative, basically where they analyze, they discuss, you know, what, what the report is showing, the metrics, and then come up with a recommendation. And again, my hope would be this could be done on an annual basis so the city council at 10 years from now would be able to look back, you could do graphs, et cetera, and really have a feel and understanding for what's going on. And then I also think that this would be very important, that we hold a public hearing. And I've set a date in October, but to allow the public to lay in, you may have people, you know, I think it's important to hear from our residents on it, and folks may have suggestions and comments that would be helpful. So, you know, I, I think that this would be, again, an appropriate thing. And, and I know if we had had one of this, this type of an ordinance put in 10 years ago, it would be very helpful for us in looking at what all of the trends have been. So, you know, my request would be that this go to the Committee on Legislative Matters.
All right, on the item, I have Counsel Ballantyne and Counsel Strazza.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to sign on. I think this is a great idea. The information is there. When I first became a city councilor, I asked for a progress report to the Summer Visions. It took the administration a little bit of time, almost two years, to be able to pull that information together, in part because different departments had different softwares. And it, it was difficult to track things. They have since figured out a way to do that. So I think that this is, this is a great idea to move forward on. Thank you for submitting it.
Counsel Strazza.
I also want to, thank you, Mr. President. I also want to commend our colleague, Counsel White on this. This is fantastic. And really, really want to emphasize the need of three and four bedroom units, the expansion of that. A lot of what I'm, we're seeing in the Affordable Housing Trust Fund and in Housing and Community Development is that the stock that is being built is studio and one bedroom, and sometimes two. And very, very extremely limited three and bedroom stock. So I do want to emphasize that and would like to explore putting in, if there hasn't already a resolution to, to compel everybody, the administration to really push for that as well, for the immediate need of that. But I would also like to sign on to this. This is important.
All right, Counsel Strazza and Ballantyne would like to sign on. Any further discussion? Counsel Davis would like to sign on. If there's no discussion, I will say, I think Counsel White, you had a long list there. I might have missed one, but I would love to see a map of where the housing is built because I think that will show us maybe some shortcomings in our zoning where we can encourage more housing to get built outside of the east side of town. If there's no further discussion, this item will be referred to Legislative Matters.
Mr. President?
Counsel Strazza.
Thank you. I forgot. Could a copy also be sent to Housing and Community Development?
Well, this is specifically an ordinance, so I think it makes most sense to be discussed in Legislative Matters. And then we can discuss, when this passes, the report would be very fitting to go to Housing and Community Development.
Thank you.
Counsel White, did you have a comment?
No, I'm just getting ready for the next one.
All right, next item, please.
Item number nine is an ordinance submitted by Counselor White, proposing an amendment, ordinance 2-123, that would require notification to this council of claims against the city that are filed at the Mass Commission Against Discrimination.
Counsel White.
Thank you. It's very, very forward. I, I believe I put the amendment in that initially required that we be notified of lawsuits filed against the city. So I think that it especially is important for the, for the council also to know of claims being brought against the city at the Mass Commission Against Discrimination. So that's the purpose of this amendment. And, you know, after hearing about the hiring of outside counsel for the civil service appeal, you know, my thoughts would be to also add notification when any city employee files a, an appeal to the Civil Service Commission. Just we're, we're aware of that. So I, I assume this will go to Legislative Matters, so when the committee discusses that, this proposed amendment, maybe they can also include the thought or a provision that appeals to the Civil Service Commission also be sent to this city council so we're aware of it. Thank you.
All right, on this, all right, on this, I have Counselor Scott wanted to sign on. Let me back up. Scott, Klingon, Mbah, Davis, and Counsel Scott would like to comment.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, my colleague at large. I have found the reports from the initial ordinance that Counsel White proposed him has to be enormously useful. And yet also have noticed the blind spots in it. This, particularly in relation to IMCAD, the Mass Commission Against Discrimination, I think is vitally important because while I have been informed by multiple residents of cases that they have brought to IMCAD, we're inquiring of our law department and the city for more information or any information about those cases, even, even their existence. I've been told that's not information that I'm allowed to know. So I appreciate that we're gonna have this discussion in Legislative Matters and hopefully find a hopefully find a way to get it on the books so that there won't be any further obstruction, and at least we can be aware of what is happening, and what cases being brought against the city. So I cannot commend this enough, and I look forward to getting it on the books. Thank you.
Councilor Ballantyne would like to sign on. Any further discussion? Here and on this item, we refer to Legislative Matters.
Item number 10 is an order submitted by Councilor Strozo that the Director of Public Works and the Director of Sustainability and Environment discuss with the Committee on Housing and Community Development the possibility of installing cigarette bin voting boxes citywide to eliminate cigarette butt litter that can eventually flow into our water sources.
Councilor Strozo.
Thank you, Mr. President. Okay, so unfun fact, cigarette butts are the number one polluters of our oceans. And if a smoker flicks their cigarette butt into the street, it goes in the sewers, the water streams, in the rain, the snow, and it makes, so it makes its way there. Cigarette filters contain plastic, which can take over 10 years to decompose. And so I've seen this done in different communities and throughout the world where there's these cigarette voting boxes, similar, which encourages smokers, instead of flicking their cigarette butts into the street, to vote with their opinions. So, and the voting options, so do you like dogs or do you like cats? You put your cigarette butt and vote with your butt. So we're essentially tricking people to give their opinion and with their cigarette butt instead of throwing it into our community. It can help with cleanup as well. And what I really like is possibly we can encourage our schoolchildren to create the voting options. So do you like winter or summer? And give solutions. So we're pulling all kinds of different voices into taking care of our community, and I'd love to explore this and see if it's possible. Thank you.
All right, on the item, Councilor Davis.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Councilor Strozo, for bringing this. I would like to sign on. And the primary reason is that this, essentially the same request was the very first item, I think the very first item that I submitted many years back as a councillor. And under the powers that be at the time, it went, it promptly went exactly nowhere. And I learned a lesson in pick the battles which you want to fight and maybe let a few others, save a few others for another day. So here we are in another day. Obviously, I prefer that we encourage folks to not smoke because that's better for their own health, but where that happens, certainly this, anything we can do to keep them off the streets. Less need for municipal leaf blowers to blow them out of the cracks. Stay tuned for more on leaf blowers later tonight. But no, I'm on board. Sounds good. Let's figure out where to put them and how to do it and keep them off sidewalks. Thank you, Councilor Strozo.
Mr. President, can I respond?
Please do.
Thank you. So this is retro, so this is, that's great. I'm glad that we're bringing it back, and I'm happy to go alongside you with this. This is exciting.
All right, Councilor Ballantyne would like to sign on. Any further discussion? Here and none. This item is laid on the table for approval. Copy sent to Housing Community Development.
Item number 11 is an order submitted by Councilor Ewan Campen and Councilor Niedergang that the Director of Engineering install raised crosswalks rather than standard crosswalks for each at-grade crossing of the community path extension, including Central, Sycamore, and Walnut Streets.
See, Counselor Scott would like to sign on. Counselor Ewan Campen.
Thank you, Mr. President. So Counselor Niedergang and I both independently submitted the same order, and then we joined forces. So at the beginning of the month, in May, the administration shared with the city council an update on details of the community path extension, the multi-use pedestrian bike path that's going to extend from where it currently ends at Lowell Street all the way to Leechmere, which we are all extremely excited about. But one of the major red flags that we saw in these documents from the drawings, and I want to be clear, the administration is under a nondisclosure agreement with the state GLX project, so we only get these kind of little snippets of drawings. But from the drawings that we've seen, it looks like where the community path crosses Central, Sycamore, and Walnut, they're described as typical ADA curb cuts and crosswalk. And there's a drawing that makes it look like there's a curb cut that goes down to the street, and then you got a cross. So I have not yet received direct confirmation from the administration of, you know, whether that is in fact the case, but that's certainly what it looks like. And I'll just say, on the western side of the path, on Cedar and Willow, there are raised crosswalks, the path goes straight across the sidewalk. So I view this as completely unacceptable. This is going to be a highly used pedestrian and bicycle pathway that is going to cross major streets with serious traffic on them that goes way too fast on steep hills. Think about the activities you see on the community path, kids on bikes, strollers, people of all mobility abilities and needs, and they're trying to cross in large numbers on Central, on Sycamore, on Walnut, at rush hour during the morning commute in a normal crosswalk. This is incredibly dangerous to imagine, and it's something that all of us have been talking about for years, and this is the first kind of drawings we've seen, and it sure looks like they're not going to be raised crosswalks. So again, I'm waiting for an official response from the administration on this, and I'm submitting this order to clarify the current plan and just to say in the strongest possible terms that these really need to be raised crosswalks to be safe.
Councilor Ballantyne would like to sign on, and Klingon. Any further discussion?
Yes, Mr. President. Yeah, thank you. Yeah, thanks to Counselor Ewan Campen for that. I'd like this to go to Traffic and Parking. I've already put it on the agenda for Monday night's Traffic and Parking meeting, and hopefully we'll get answers from Mr. Rossen of the Mobility Division. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And I'll just add that I would love a simple curb cut on Walnut Street right by the Kempnut site there, the park, and I've been told that I have to wait till 2023 for that. So best of luck to you, gentlemen. I hope you get what you want. It's, you're asking for a lot more than what I want, and I'm being told to wait till 2023. If there's no further discussion, yes, Counselor Niedergang?
So we were told in Traffic and Parking, two or three months ago, that this was going to be done this spring and summer, the Kempnuts' curb cut. Was the information that you got about 2023 after that?
It was after that. I was told that they need to pay to do a study to figure out how to do the curb cut on Walnut Street. And I will say that what you're asking for, I would prefer, but I would like anything.
Well, I'll ask about that as well at the meeting on Monday night. Thank you for letting us know about that.
All right, thank you. No further discussion. This item is laid on the table for approval. We refer to Traffic and Parking.
Item number 12 is an order submitted by Councilor Ewan Campen that the Director of SBCD reconvene the high school parking working group and provide an update on what's being done to understand and address parking issues for teachers, staff, and residents.
All right, I got a few people sponsoring this, and if you don't mind, everyone, please just wait until the item comes up because then I have to backtrack, but I got Counselor Scott, and see, everyone's signing on now again. Scott, Klingon, Rosetti, Bah, and Davis would all like to sign on. Counselor Ewan Campen.
Thank you, Mr. President. So at the end of 2017, which is just before I became a city councillor, the city made the decision to not build a new parking garage with the new high school, despite the fact that somewhere around 150, 160 parking spaces are being removed from the campus. And since that time, and I want to especially shout out my colleague Counselor Rosetti, who's been very, very involved with this, for the past almost four years now, we have convened a working group, and we have been planning and discussing and preparing and doing multiple studies and having probably a half dozen community meetings, attempting to procure off-site parking through an RFP process that didn't pan out. And now here we are. The high school building is officially open, which is wonderful, and as far as I can tell, we still don't have a plan in place, aside from asking teachers and city staff and library patrons and the construction workers to park in the neighborhood. So it's clear to me that for the rest of this school year, extremely unusual school year, that we're going to scrape by with the current plan, and I think we all know we're in this together. But ask anyone who lives in the neighborhood, if you walk around a bit before 8:00 a.m. for the last several weeks, it's absolutely clear that the current plan is not a long-term solution. And just one example, over the past two weeks, I've gotten probably half a dozen calls from constituents who tell me that during street sweeping, that the streets are completely full of cars, and when they call through and want to ask about it, they're told that street sweeping has just been canceled in the neighborhood until the end of the school year. Obviously, no one wants to ticket the teachers. That's not what I'm saying here. I think everyone kind of understands the situation, but it's just clear that this is not a long-term solution. Just this week, we received a communication from the Board of Library Trustees who raised a number of, you know, serious well-thought-out concerns about the dedicated parking needs that they feel like a number of their patrons have, which have currently been lost due to a lot of construction. And they also, in that letter, raised the concern that they are, they really want to improve the bicycle safety on Highland Ave. And so we certainly cannot let the parking issues scuttle all of the work that we're doing to improve bicycle and pedestrian and MBTA bus issues. So let me just acknowledge that right now is a particularly challenging time. So in addition to, you know, the outrageously unusual school year, there are also three construction projects going on simultaneously. There's a playground in front of the high school, the high school itself, and the GLX. And we know that the contractors can no longer really carpool due to COVID, so there is, you know, this is hopefully a blue moon situation, and I don't believe that it is always going to be like this. But I, we need to take this opportunity and what we are learning from it to come up with a real plan. We need the administration to cut down to brass tacks and figure out what we're going to do before next school year. I am all for improving our non-car transportation in the city, but we also need to just acknowledge the basic reality of teachers, city staff, library patrons, that there is a certain amount of parking need, and it's, I still don't feel like we have an actual plan. So I am asking that we restart the task force. I'm asking that we actually don't have a series of community meetings because all of these meetings, until we have a plan, I don't really feel comfortable, you know, gathering everyone together to just kind of vent with nothing to tell them. Excuse my rant, but the time is now to come up with a plan. So I would ask that this go to Traffic and Parking, please.
It was a fine rant, and one that others would like to comment on as well. I have Counselor Rosetti, and Counselor Ballantyne would like to sign on, and I got Counselor Rosetti and Davis.
Mr. President, thank you. Through you to my colleague Counselor Ewan Campen. Bravo. I will be brief, Mr. President. I'm just going to read publicly the response I sent to the Library Board of Trustees just the other evening. Dear all, thank you for your communication. I couldn't agree more. From day one of this momentous plan, I have expressed my concern of this very matter. Our school department employees, city hall staff, families who have, whom have their children attending Somerville High School, visiting families from other districts, attendees of sporting events, drama events, daily library happenings, residents wishing to visit city hall, et cetera, et cetera, are left out in the cold. Long ago, at my urging, a neighborhood task force was formed to work together with city staff addressing this very concern. One such member of this task force, a director butter, after advocating as best as she could, and she is an attorney by day, after advocating as best as she could throughout these meetings, saw the writing on the wall so to speak, and pulled a permit to create a driveway for her residence. I am with you all 100%. I consistently voted a solid no for this project because of the elimination of parking spaces. I continue to be but one voice. My heartfelt apologies to all. Thank you, Mr. President.
Counselor Davis.
Thank you, Mr. President. I will work hard to try and avoid repeating the statements that I already made. I echo and wholeheartedly endorse the rant from the good councillor from Ward Three. I have, like Counselor Rosetti, I have consistently raised this issue and expressed my immense frustration and disappointment and just disbelief that this administration has allowed this to, the situation to proceed as it has. The administration doesn't bear full responsibility. There are folks who are participating in this meeting as councillors right now who bear responsibility for this. I argued years ago, when there was a plan for the garage under the playing field as part of the high school to exist. It was originally much larger, but there was a smaller, I believe it was around 150 spots, plan, and we had a debate in this body. And folks argued that, no, no, we should never build parking like that. It's not consistent with our views to go to a car-free society. A view that I fully share and have supported bicycle and pedestrian infrastructure and take in not using our public streets and property for storing private vehicles, completely sign on to all of that. But teachers need to park, and people who come into the city to watch sporting events or attend performances in a fabulous new theater that will be open next year, many of them are going to have to park. And to suggest that the streets that peel off from the top of this hill precipitously are, you know, will be an okay place for everyone to park in the middle of the winter is just comically inappropriate and inadequate. And the fact that we're spending X millions of dollars to build a pile of dirt to put a playing field on when we could have spent X million additional dollars to build a parking garage to put a playing field on is just stupid. And I thank Counselor Ewan Campen for raising this again. This is just another place where we're screaming into the void. We've been doing it for however many years now, and I don't understand why no one who's in the administration has figured out a way to solve this problem. It may be that the only real practical way to solve this problem has been, has passed us by because that garage under the playing field inside the pile of dirt made perfect sense to anyone who was willing to look at it rationally. But here we are. We've completely screwed this up, and it needs to be fixed. And I've said that before, I don't have any expectation that anything's going to change, probably until we have a new mayor, but I challenge this administration to come up with some plan that will, you know, will address the situation before next school year because next year and the year after, and the year after, we will lose good teachers and staff from that high school. We will have a hard time recruiting some teachers and staff because not everyone can walk up the hill in the middle of winter, or walk down the hill, or take a shuttle to a parking spot because God knows we don't pay our teachers enough. And part of the reason why some folks can get into that profession is that they can head out in the afternoon and do whatever they need to do, but, you know, we're going to put them on a shuttle out to Deal Boy or whatever ridiculous solution has been thrown out there. It's just, it's inexcusable, and I don't know what else to do other than just keep shouting into the void every time this comes up. Thank you, Mr. President.
Counselor Scott.
Thank you, Mr. President. Full agreement with everything that's been said so far. But as we, as we discuss it, I do want to point out that this is one of those big-picture questions of investment that, as we were talking about 90 Washington earlier, you know, could be a bigger part of how we solve some larger problems. As my colleague from Ward Six just pointed out, we have had recruitment issues and retention issues, and we all know that the salary of the teacher in Somerville isn't enough to afford to live in Somerville. So as we look to moving towards a car-free society, I would be really interested in, as we undertake these massive projects that we are getting both federal funding for infrastructure for and also are committing our city to, that perhaps being a teacher in Somerville comes with a housing benefit. Perhaps there's a way that we can ensure that our teachers can walk to the schools that they work in. Now, that doesn't obviate the need for parking for, of course, longtime teachers who live outside the community, and also for visitors to all of these, all of these functions that we have at the high school, even, and the library, even visiting sports teams. So I think this is a both and situation, but as we talk about the need to think bigger, this is one of those places where I think it clearly applies. Thank you.
Any further comment? Here and none. I just want to weigh in real quick so that people don't think that I support a high school with no parking lot. I did think it was ridiculous that it was left out, but I got to say, this is the most expensive high school in the history of the state, and having a parking lot would have been a whole lot more expensive than that. My Myself and several people on this board voted to approve the bond to renovate the high school. It wasn't our fault that they left the parking out, but maybe we could have cut out some other amenities to make it more cost-effective. And this is something that the entire city, every resident in the city is going to be paying for this for the foreseeable future. So, I just want to weigh in on that and say, there's a lot of blame to go around. It's not, it's no solution as far as what I'm saying, but it's a very expensive high school. Seeing no further comments, this item is laid on the table for approval and referred to Traffic and Parking.
Item number 13 is an order submitted by Counselor Ewan Campen, that the Director of SBCD determine with the developer of the first Unitarian Church at 125 Highland Ave, whether there is the possibility of a partnership with the city or a nonprofit to turn it into affordable housing.
Counselor Ewan Campen?
Thank you, Mr. President. So, the First Unitarian Church at 125 Highland Ave was, it's recently under agreement with a developer who's seeking to demolish the structure in advance of a development project. It's a structure that's on the National Register of Historic Buildings. From what I understand, it's in excellent shape. The Historic Preservation Commission, a few weeks ago, voted to delay any possible demolition for a negotiation, but as we all know, that period, that's a maximum wait of 12 months, which may or may not be long enough. The developer seems very intent on demolishing it, and I know that many of my constituents feel that that is a shame and really strongly believe that the building itself could be adaptively reused for housing, or for, you know, whatever kind of use inside. So, I recognize that there are a lot of challenges to renovating an old building, and I also recognize that, you know, no private developers seem to be interested in building affordable housing without some kind of subsidy. So, you know, I just want to go on record, really encouraging the developer, if there is any way to work with the administration, whether that involves, you know, applying for CPA funding, funding from the Affordable Housing Trust. I think this would be a really excellent use of the building to create mixed-use affordable housing, you know, on Highland Ave and to preserve this building. You know, whether or not that is possible is sort of above my pay grade, but it's certainly worth trying. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Here and none. This item is laid on the table for approval.
Item 14 is an order submitted by Counselor Ewan Campen, that the Director of Inspection Services provide a warning before issuing a ticket for the first instance of a minor residential trash bin violation, such as a lid being propped open.
Counselor Ewan Campen?
Thank you, Mr. President. So, every so often, I hear from a resident who's gotten a ticket in the mail for what looks to me, from the photo, like an extremely minor infraction on the trash bins, such as, you know, the lid being slightly propped open. I recognize that this council understandably puts a lot of pressure on inspectional service to stay on top of road and prevention. I strongly support that. I also think it comes as a major shock to people if they don't first receive a warning. And I often hear that it leaves a bad taste in people's mouths when they see a lack of strict enforcement on a lot of development sites around the city, and then longtime residents are kind of getting hit without a warning, often sort of unaware of the strictness of the rules. So, I would think that this is the policy, but I know that there are instances that I have heard about repeatedly, and recently in this case, of, you know, just a large ticket showing up for a bin being cracked open. And so, I would just ask our ISD Director to please send a warning first. I think it'll still get the job done. Thank you.
All right. Seeing no further discussion, this item is laid on the table for approval.
Item 15 is an order submitted by Counselor Niedergang, that this council consider amending the demolition review ordinance to extend the maximum demolition delay period that the Historic Preservation Commission can impose on buildings of historical value from 12 months to 18 months.
Counselor Niedergang?
Thank you, Mr. President. In addition to the First Unitarian Church at 125 Highland Avenue that Counselor Ewan Campen just discussed, another beautiful old building that the Historic Preservation Commission wanted to preserve, but could only put a 12-month demolition delay on it is 187 Central Street. It's the beautiful, old, pillared building that Catholic Charities occupied, ran a daycare center out of for many years. This is a very important historical building. It's also a very beautiful building in an area where there are quite a few of those buildings. I would like the Legislative Matters Committee to look at this again and reconsider. I believe 12 months delay for a developer is simply part of the cost of doing business, and not that great a cost. And they will just wait it out and knock these beautiful old buildings down. These are precious resources, which, once they're gone, can never be replaced. So, I'd like this to go to Legislative Matters for that committee to work on this part of the ordinance once again. Thank you.
All right. On the item, Counselor Davis?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to sign on. Thank you, Counselor Niedergang, for coming back to this. You know, another circumstance where, you know, we said at the time that 12 months was comically, you know, inadequate to make any difference to developers in these situations, and lo and behold, that was right. So, I don't think 18 months is enough, frankly, to, the point of the delay period is to encourage property owners to work with the Historic Preservation Committee to come up with a compromise, a solution, another idea. It's happened in the past when you had a willing developer, but the experience just shows that, as Counselor Niedergang said, they just factored into the cost of doing business. So, you know, if we want to make this have any real teeth, you know, 12 months is a joke. It was nine months before. We basically did nothing. We spent years working for, you know, improvements in other areas, but, you know, made no practical impact on the ability of the commission to work with property owners on coming up with, you know, any reasonable way to preserve, or maintain, or, you know, reimagine properties. So, fully support, as I did before, would support a longer period than 18 months, but I'll take what I can get.
All right. See Counselor Klingon wants to sign on. Any further comment? Here and none. This item will be laid on the table for approval with a copy sent to Legislative Matters.
Item number 16 is an order submitted by Counselor Niedergang, that the Director of SBCD install flashing stop signs on Lowell Street at its intersection with Albion Street to prevent accidents caused by speeding or incautious motor vehicles.
Counselor Niedergang?
Just send to Traffic and Parking, please. And same thing with item 17, but I'd like it to be read.
All right. Counselor Strasser would like to sign on to item 16. This item is laid on the table for approval with a copy sent to Traffic and Parking. Please read item 17.
Item 17 is an order submitted by Counselor Niedergang, that the Director of SBCD use the $220,000 in traffic mitigation funds paid by Maxwell's Green in 2011 to improve the traffic calming infrastructure around the Magoon Lowell GLX Station.
Any discussion? Seeing none, this item is laid on the table for approval. Copy sent to Traffic and Parking.
Mr. President?
Item number eight?
If I may, on the next three items, I'd like to ask that we take five items all together and discuss them all at once, which will save time, and also, they all overlap, so I think it will be a much more expeditious use of our time and our words, and that is items 18, 19, 20. I would like them all to be read, the next three items, item 87, and then I have a late item, a resolution. And I'd like all five of those to be read, and then I'd like to speak, and then allow anybody else who wants to speak, of course. Thank you.
Do you have all that, Mr. Clerk?
Yes, I do.
Okay. Please read all five items.
Did we lose our clerk, Mr. Lawn?
That was one of the finest readings I've done to date, and it went into the ether. I apologize.
Very succinct.
Item number 18 is an order submitted by Counselor Niedergang, that the Director of SBCD report to this council on the proposed Mast dot I-93 viaduct project to replace Warren Steel, which will divert traffic into Mystic Ave and East Somerville Neighborhoods at night, starting in 2022. Item 19 is a communication submitted by Counselor Niedergang, inviting the council, the administration, and the public to the Highway Justice for People Mystic and McGrath Rally, which is going to be on May 26 at 6:00 PM at the Empty Lot on the corner of Broadway and McGrath Highway, to demand that Mass DOT prioritize the safety of people over the movement of cars. Item 20 is a communication submitted by Counselor Niedergang, sharing with this council, the administration, and the public, a six-page blog post from State Representative Mike Connolly. Item 87, which I can't put up on the screen right now, is a communication submitted by Trans Systems, which is conveying the notice of an I-93 bridge rehabilitation project to the city council. And the late item is a resolution submitted by Counselor Niedergang, McLaughlin, Klingon, and the mayor, calling on the Mass DOT to prioritize, speed up, and enhance roadway safety improvements on Mystic Ave and McGrath Highway, and include sound walls in the I-93 Viaduct Steel Rehab Project.
All right. Counselor Klingon and I would like to sign on to all relative items. Counselor Niedergang?
Thank you, Mr. President. First, before I forget, I'd like all of these items to go to Traffic and Parking for further discussion. So, the gist of this really is that Mystic Avenue and McGrath Highway are the corridor of death. We've had three residents die, getting killed, hit by cars on Mystic Avenue and McGrath Highway, in just the last two years. And there are some planned improvements to these roads, but they're not going to be happening, a few will be happening, but the most important ones now appear to have been pushed back to begin in 2023, which means they may not be completed for another year or two. Meanwhile, as is described in the resolution that I wrote and in Representative Connolly's blog post, meanwhile, I, Mass DOT has just recently told everybody that they are planning a major steel rehabilitation project on the I-93 viaduct in exactly the same area, right over Mystic Avenue, right near McGrath Highway, right where these deaths have occurred. They want to spend a lot of money on this. They want to route traffic at night through our neighborhood streets in that area, and they want to apparently push back the life-preserving, pedestrian safety improvements that they are planning, which are not nearly enough, by the way. They're not nearly sufficient. There's something, they're better than nothing. They will make a difference, but they're not enough. They want to push those back to 2023, and they're fast-tracking this steel rehabilitation project on the viaduct of I-93. They want to start that in 2022. And when they announced it, when they told us that it had happened, it was already at either 75 or 100% design, which is very unusual. So, this is clearly their priority. They don't seem to care nearly as much about pedestrians, our residents who are being killed crossing the street to stop and shop, you know, people take their kids to school, go to work, they have to cross these streets, Mystic Avenue and McGrath Highway. They don't have a choice, and they're incredibly dangerous for pedestrians. Meanwhile, in addition to this, our state reps and city officials have been begging, begging, and you, Counselor McLaughlin, more than anybody, have been begging Mass DOT to put sound walls up on I-93 in this area to protect residents not only from noise, but from the deadly fine particle air pollution that comes from the cars that go on I-93. And we know, there's been research that shows that much higher rates of cancer, heart disease, lung disease, and death in the corridors of major highways. And Mass DOT has told our state reps that they can only put the sound walls on when they have a major construction project on I-93. Well, now, there's a major construction project on I-93 right in the same location that they want to spend $37 million on it, but there's been no mention, much less commitment, of building the sound walls. Meanwhile, our terrific state legislative delegation has secured $2 million for sound walls in the state bond bill, and also $2 million for enhanced Mystic Avenue and McGrath Highway improvements. So, there's money there, and there's also been talk of federal grants in conjunction with the state money to build the sound walls. So, you know, this is just, I mean, I don't even know what to say about it. It is so incredibly appalling and just so life-unaffirming. The decisions that Mass DOT seems to be on the verge of making are so bad for residents in our community, if not deadly, and so much favor the steel over the lives of the people in our community. That's really all I can say about it. I mean, you know, I could yell and scream, but, so we're having this, the Somerville Alliance for Safe Streets is sponsoring a demonstration. Hopefully, there'll be a lot of media coverage. We are trying to put pressure on Mass DOT in every way possible to get them to reconsider these decisions, with the goal of not only speeding up, but enhancing the improvements to Mystic Avenue and McGrath Highway, and putting sound walls on I-93 when they do the steel rehabilitation project, which hopefully would be a second priority after making the local streets safer, so that people don't keep on getting killed. So, I'll stop at this point, and I hope that the council will support this resolution, and I hope some others will speak about what I, I'm just not good at expressing outrage. It's just outrageous. Thank you.
Your outrage is appreciated, Counselor Niedergang. On the item, I see the whole council would like to sign on to all relative items. Counselor Bala, you had a comment? And Counselor Plan?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you also, Counselor Niedergang, for putting this forward. I just want to say, even the Honorable President, that I call him the voice of reason, I have no idea, like, it's really sad to see how people, you know, like, the corporate or the system always put profit first, you know, before people. So, when these roads were designed, it was just about bottom line. They had no intention of taking care of the people that live in this area, because it's really sad that these are the same marginalized communities that are suffering from noise pollution, are suffering from air pollution, and then road safety too, again, on top of it. So, it's really, it's shameful, you know, that we have to keep bringing this to full attention, with the understanding that it is an intentional design, just to, like, really destroy people's lives, you know, just in the interest of corporate. So, hopefully, you know, this will, things will, I mean, pick up, or will actually, like, create some meaningful changes as a result of this. We've just lost a life, you know. It's really appalling, but I just want to say, thank you for putting this forward. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. We got Counselor Klingon and Ewan Campen.
Through you, Mr. President. I just want to say, you know, you know, when I learned of this viaduct project that was coming our way, it pretty much was sprung on everybody, like, completely out of the blue, including our state delegation, who had no idea that this was in the works and that it would delay, you know, the already-promised projects that we have. I'm hopeful, I am really hopeful, that DOT will see the error of their ways, and at the very least, will get out of this, what we should have had gotten a long time ago, which is some sound barriers and some pollution mitigation on top of the things, the thing about it, so SAS and all of us down there in Mystic Ave area, we're not asking for anything new. We're asking for what you already promised us. And so, I really am hopeful that they'll take notice of this rally and with everybody's support, that we'll be able to, you know, get those things done, that there'll be more, hopefully, pleasure that will come with the more pain that they're going to bring the residents in that area, because I don't know if any of you have ever lived that close to a major highway before, but, you know, even a few years ago, when they did sort of like a, kind of a rehab on the undercarriage of the I-93, right around, close to Temple and
close to Temple and Mystic, they were out there sandblasting and doing all kinds of stuff every night, and the people on Bailey Road, and the people on Mystic Avenue side, I mean, the dust, the noise, the, this was overnight work, which is similar to what's going to happen now. So, you know, I, it's going to bring a lot of pain to the people in that area, and I really hope that they take advantage of this opportunity to do the right thing, and get done what they, A, promised, said they were going to get done this year, and B, put the damn sound barrier walls up, once and for all. I think it's the least they can do, that this highway running through our city that, you know, displaced and disconnected our neighborhoods, and so, you know, I'm hoping this is the movement, this is the time now, where we're going to actually get what we've been begging for, for so long. So, I hope everybody will come out on the 26th, and I want to thank SAS and Councilor Niedergang, and then Councilor McLaughlin, obviously, for leading the charge on the sound barriers, and, you know, and everybody along Mystic Ave corridor, thank you as well. So, see you on the 26th.
I'll see you on campus.
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't think there's a lot that I can add to the, what my colleagues have said. I just want to echo the just utter outrage. The, this is by far the most dangerous streets in Somerville, by an order of magnitude. As the resolution says, and if anyone hasn't read it, I really strongly encourage you to read the entire resolution that Councilor Niedergang submitted. It's incredibly powerful. Three pedestrians have been killed i-in just the last couple of years in this area, and anyone who lives there, you know, this, it's just, it is unconscionable that, as a, as a state government, we have allowed our residents to be subjected to this kind of unnecessary danger. And as Councilor Klingon just said, we know what the solutions is, what the solutions are. They've already been designed and promised to us, and I very much am thankful to the organizing that our state and federal delegation, and everyone in Somerville from SAS, and my colleagues have put into this. And I'm hopeful, but I also very much share the outrage.
All right, any further discussion? Seeing none, I do have to comment on this, because it's a very important issue to me, and I'm grateful that this is finally getting the attention, not just from elected officials, but from the public. I think the public underestimates how powerful they can be in addressing these problems as well. It, I have, do have to say, you know, it has been frustrating for me over the years to live in East Somerville and have the worst transit problems in the community, and to see other neighborhoods get prioritized. And I know people don't like hearing that, because we shouldn't have to fight each other for resources, but time and money are scarce resources, we don't have an infinite amount of them, and it's been frustrating me for over the years to see safe streets be made safer, when people in my community have to cross a highway just to come and go from East Somerville. This has been an issue for the past 70 years, and I don't feel like it's gotten the attention from the state or local government or the public that it really needs. There is no other community that dealing with, in Somerville, that is dealing with this level of a problem, that has two highways dissecting it. And it is really important, not just for our elected officials and Mass DOT, but for the public to respond to this, and I encourage, as Councilor Niedergang said, this is an appropriate time to yell and scream. People have to get upset about this. Three people have died recently, I think we've had five so far, and the mission of Vision Zero is zero deaths, and we are finally getting around to address the highway or corridor of death, as it is called. And I really encourage residents to come out to this rally, to do more, to expect more of your elected officials, expect more of yourselves, and to come out on May 26, 6:00 PM, McGrath Highway and Broadway. Be careful crossing the street, and please wear a mask, because we'll be in close proximity to each other. If there's no further comments, the appropriate items will be laid on the table for approval, and referred to traffic and parking. And I do believe, right now, it's 9:15. I think now is an appropriate time to take a quick five-minute break. We will be in recess until 9:20. All right, the time now is 9:20. We are back from recess. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll to establish a quorum.
This is roll call to determine the presence of a quorum following the recess. Councilor Niedergang. I do not record Councilor Niedergang's attendance.
Just got here, Mr. Clerk. I'm here.
Thank you, Councilor Niedergang. Councilor White.
Here.
Councilor Ballantyne.
Here.
Councilor Ewan Campen.
Here.
Councilor Davis.
Here.
Councilor Strezzo.
Here.
Councilor Klingon.
Present.
Councilor Mbah.
Present.
Councilor Scott. Councilor Rosetti.
Present.
And Councilor McLaughlin.
Yeah.
Mr. President, all 11 councils have returned from recess. We have a quorum.
All right, please read the next item.
Item number 21 is an order submitted by Councilor Scott and Councilor McLaughlin, that the Director of Inspection Services establish a dry ice rat extermination program.
Councilor Scott.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you for bringing this item with me. We had discussed the use of dry ice several times in the past with this city council, and certainly on my mind, as I went down to buy $80 of dry ice for perfectly normal purposes, just this weekend. The dry ice is a very effective way at controlling rats and killing rats in their burrows, and we have been told in the past that it had not been approved for use in rat control. Fortunately, it turns out that the City of Boston, an Assistant ISD Commissioner in the City of Boston, found a way to get around it. And thanks to an article in Universal Hub, we have the name of Leo Boucher, Assistant ISD Commissioner, who I can only presume is the most brilliant man in a region full of brilliant people. So, it is my hope that we will resurrect this and find a way to deploy dry ice in the City of Somerville. I would point out that that article also indicated that the City of Boston, that this Assistant ISD Commissioner oversees 15 city rat control specialists, and for a city with eight times the population of Somerville, for them to have 15 times as many rat control people, I think indicates a different level of seriousness in addressing the problem. So, hopefully, that focus will come in the next meeting of our rat committee, which our president so ably chairs. Thank you.
Just to clarify, Councilor Ewan Campen shares that, but I do sit on the committee and look forward to this conversation. I have Councilor Strezzo, Klingon, and White would all like to sign on, and I think Mbah, did you say his, nope, they're just those groups. Yes, that's a great.
Mr. President.
Councilor Ba would like to sign on as well, and that's an interesting point, Councilor Scott, about the staff required, the staff in Boston. And we do have one rat specialist who is also tasked with dealing with COVID. So, that's definitely an important issue as well, but when you have one person who's dedicated to rats in the city, I'd like to see that person be used to the fullest extent. We've gotten significant increase in calls of rats in the past few weeks alone, as the weather increases, or gets warmer, and I definitely want this addressed. I thank you for bringing it up. This item will be laid on the table for approval and referred to the Roding Committee.
Item 22 is an order submitted by Councilor Scott, that this council consider passage of a home rule petition enabling a right to charge, similar to House Bill 4109, or Chapter 370 of the Acts of 2018, which ensures that tenants are also supported in our petition.
Councilor. Thank you, Mr. President. So, you know, clearly, reaching our climate change and environmental goals is, you know, reducing our reliance on fossil fuels is one piece of it, and also, you know, one of the biggest banks of buck we can have is maximizing the use and frequency of public transit here, but we do have electric cars as well, and one issue that has come up in neighboring communities, and I've actually been contacted by several constituents about, is some of the difficulties that people in homeowner associations or condo associations have in getting charging stations put in at their buildings. So, this right-to-charge type of legislation that's been put forward by other communities basically guarantees that somebody who wants to put a charging station in to their property will be able to, won't be able to be blocked, but one thing that I'd like us to consider as we look at our version of it, is given that the city as a whole is somewhere over two-thirds renter occupied, and my district in particular is over 80% tenants, to make sure that our language of it also includes provisions, so that tenants have the opportunity to not be blocked from installing charging stations to support their use of electric cars. So, thank you.
All right, I see, let's see. Councilor Davis, were you signing on to this one? And Councilor Ba?
Yes, Mr. President.
Yes, please, all right. Councilor Davis and Ba would like to sign on. Seeing no further discussion, this item is up. Councilor Ballantyne as well. This item will be referred to the Legislative Matters Committee.
Item number 23 is an order submitted by Councilor Scott, that this council review the past 20 years of the city's police department reform recommendations and the resulting changes.
Councilor Scott.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is following on from a lot of the work that happened almost a year ago, looking at our spending on the police budget, and in response to many of the calls and public activism around the need for dramatic reform. So, a group of activists in the city have been doing a lot of research about this, and, you know, again, we have some members of this council that have institutional memory that reaches back to this time. One colleague in large, at large in particular, was quoted on some of the reform calls that were made back in 2001, 2004, 2005, and 2007. So, I've been approached by, by this research team, who has a brief presentation to make. They will be bringing that to our next Finance Committee meeting, basically reviewing all of the different studies, management studies, investigative commissions, that have been convened during the course of the Kurt Ertoni tenure, and even prior to that, and have captured what action was done in response to all of those recommendations and reports, as well as how correlated to the spending, and the calls of service, calls for service over that course of time. So, I've seen a preview of this. I think it's going to be very informative, and I think it's going to be a very, very helpful presentation as we enter budget season, and of course, I'll be inviting staff from the administration and police department to join us as well. So, with that said, this is just joining the item that Councilor Niedergang had already put in with a memo of his thoughts on police spending, so I anticipate all of that to be a point of discussion in our next Finance meeting, which I believe is for the 25th. Thank you.
Councilor Ba would like to sign on, and Councilor Ballantyne.
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you to the Chair of Finance, is it possible to get, since you've seen this, that it can be shared with all Finance Committee members or the entire council, so we can see ahead of that meeting, and if, so we can be prepared and ask questions if necessary?
I certainly don't see a problem with that. Again, when I was approached by them, you know, they had a preview version that wasn't finished yet, so I can certainly request that and get that out to folks as soon as possible, so folks have a chance to look at it in advance of the meeting. so folks have a chance to look at it in advance of the meeting.
Thank you.
All right, any further discussion? Seeing none, Counselor Scott, did you say you wanted this to go to Finance?
Yes, sir, particularly as it relates to the spending and staffing levels of the police department, which I already have at least one item in committee on, so I was going to have it there.
Okay, I wasn't aware of that, so please note that I'm recused from this item, but this item will be laid on the table for approval and referred to the Finance Committee.
Thank you.
Mr. President, may it be wise to vote on this separately, given your status as being recused.
Counselor Rosetti, take the stage.
Mr. Clerk, could you please call the roll on referring this item to Finance, please?
This is a roll call vote on the approval of item number 23, that the council review the last 20 years of the police department's recommendations, approving it with a copy going to the Finance Committee on that item. Counselor Niedergang.
Yes, please.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Ballantyne.
Yes.
Counselor Ewan Campen.
Yes.
Counselor Davis.
Yes.
Counselor Strezzo.
Yes.
Counselor Klingon.
Yes.
Counselor Mbah.
Yes.
Counselor Scott.
Yes.
Counselor Rosetti.
Yes.
And Counselor McLaughlin. I record Counselor McLaughlin as recused. 10 councils have voted in favor of that order. That order has been approved and with a copy sent to the Finance Committee for follow-up.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Next item, please.
Item number 24 is an order submitted by Counselor Scott that this council review the results of Ordinance 2-21 regarding adult-use marijuana licensure and consider additional modifications as needed.
Counselor Scott.
Thank you, Mr. President. So this council passed several years ago, Ordinance 222-221, which at the time was seen as groundbreaking, leading legislation that got copied in many different municipalities across the state. And, you know, I'm very proud that we did it, but this many years in, and especially nearly half decade after the referendum, we still don't have, we still haven't achieved equity, I don't believe, in this program. We still don't have any adult-use shops open, and the number of economic empowerment applicants that are in the pipeline to be approved is still perhaps not where we want to be. So I'd just like to take a look at that. I've had some conversations with folks who have been working in the equity space, most notably with Shaleen Title, who I believe we're all familiar with, for her excellent work on the state's Cannabis Control Commission. She's now left that, but is still active in the space. And so I would just like to put this item in and would be happy to work with the Chair of the appropriate committee to bring together a panel of people who are, for example, in Western Mass, a minority-owned co-op out there, a minority-led worker-owned co-op out there, and other activists and professionals in the space to talk about where we are in terms of achieving our equity goals and making sure that Somerville can make any necessary modifications to lead the way for folks in the rest of the state and make sure that we get the outcomes here that I think we've all been in favor of from date.
Counselor Mbah would like to sign on. Any discussion? Seeing none, this item will be laid on the table for approval with a copy sent to the Land Use Committee.
Item number 25 is an order submitted by Counselor Scott that the Director of Planning prepare an amendment to the zoning ordinance to enable adult-use marijuana delivery businesses.
Counselor Scott.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is simply a missed step. Back when we were working on the zoning ordinance initially, delivery licenses hadn't actually been finalized by the state. Now there are actually two classes, one of which is a warehouse model where you have product there, the other which is a courier model where you're basically just a taxi dispatch station. The driver has to go to an adult-use establishment, make the purchase there, and deliver it to the person. I don't know which one of these is going to be the most popular, but right now, none of them can operate in the city of Somerville because they're not included in our zoning ordinance. So I was just having a conversation about this with Mr. Bartman and want to make sure that this goes on there so that it gets on our list. Thank you.
All right, Counselor Ewan Campen would like to sign on. Any further discussion? Seeing none, this item will be laid on the table for approval with a copy sent to the Land Use Committee.
Item 26 is an order submitted by Counselor Scott that the Director of Planning advise this council regarding expansion of public notification practices to include public postings on the property where the permit is being applied for, as this happens in neighboring communities.
Counselor.
Thank you. You know, we have struggled as a council to get, to actually broaden our notification. For a reminder for people in the public right now, when there's going to be a public hearing, when there's development that's going to impact you in your neighborhood, the notifications only go to property owners. And again, in a city that's over two-thirds tenant occupied, in a district like mine that is over 80% tenant occupied, it's just not acceptable, and it leaves too many people out of the public process. So in an effort to democratize this, you know, we've come up with all kinds of ideas, none of which have been implemented. But one line that we did put in the zoning does require public postings on the properties. Now, as far as I can tell, that requirement that's in our zoning isn't getting followed, certainly not in Ward 2, and I can't say that I've seen any posters on developments in advance of their public hearings or their neighborhood meetings. So one thing that I would like to pursue is an expansion of the requirement that's in our zoning currently, maybe it requires a separate ordinance outside, because when I walk around Cambridge, I see giant posters, I mean, big ones, like four foot by six foot, on the fence with information about the application, about the development proposed, about when the hearing is going to be, what the link is to get there. So we need to do better, and clearly, the line that we put in the zoning is insufficient to specify how it gets posted, how long it stays up, and really, there's no penalty for not doing so. So I would just like us to put a little bit more teeth and specificity behind it. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right, I see Counselor Klingon, Davis, and Ewan Campen would like to sign on. Any further discussion? Seeing none, this item is laid on the table for approval.
Item 27 is an order submitted by Counselor Scott that C. Solicitor advised this council on the restrictions of public notice posting requirements for local businesses, particularly as it relates to business practices such as wages.
Counselor Scott.
Thank you, Mr. President. As, you know, as we work on workers' issues and we have this wage theft ordinance, one thing came up recently. As we come out of this COVID crisis and we hear about the difficulties that some employers have in hiring people, the issue of, well, what wages are being offered definitely has come up time and again. And I'm also reminded, because one of my nearby neighbors here, one of our local Union Square businesses, is Juliet Restaurant, which is a one-fair wage restaurant, where they pay their people not the tipped minimum wage of less than $3 an hour and count on their employees to survive off the tips that are provided, but actually pay their employees a wage they can live on. And I think that's, it's an incredible program, but one that people only find out about, you know, through, from the business itself, publicizing that that's the kind of business they own. So one idea that was brought to me was the question of, could we, as a city, have as part of the public postings, a local ordinance that says that local businesses have to post what their lowest-paid employee earns per hour? And I floated this actually on social media and got a fair amount of feedback from people who are very intrigued and excited by this, and would say that that would actually help guide their patronage decisions to support the kind of businesses here in Somerville that are paying people living wages, that are paying people, paying people well. People want to do good with their dollars and want to make sure that they're supporting businesses that are supporting workers. So I don't know what the limitations of state law on this are. This is just the start of an exploration, but I would love to have this go to committee for discussion and have the Law Department help us do some research on this until we can get our own staff and legal counsel to do that kind of work. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right, I see Counselor Davis and Mbah would like to sign on. Any further comment? Seeing none, this item will be laid on the table for approval and referred to Legislative
Item 28 is a report of committee on confirmation of appointments and personnel matters which met on April 27.
Counselor Rosetti.
Thank you, sir. I will be brief. The report is, of course, up online and viewable. We had multiple members of the community join the committee as well, excuse me, of the staff, city staff, join us as well. Bottom line is, we had some important appointments and reappointments to address, and I'm proud to say that each person was unanimously approved out of committee, first being Nicholas Salerno as Election Commissioner, next Rose White to the Community Preservation Act Committee, Amy Feldman to the position of Library Trustee, and Georgina Toussaint to the position of Library Trustee as well. I wish to congratulate them all. I hope that the rest of the council will support your committee. We unanimously agreed with the administration on these requests. I submit this report. I ask for this report to be approved as submitted.
All right, Counselor Rosetti asked for the report to be submitted, accepted as submitted. Any discussion? Seeing none, this item is laid on the table for approval. Great committee report.
Item 29 is a report of committee on confirmation of appointments and personnel matters which met on May 11.
Counselor Rosetti.
Thank you once again, sir. It is up online and demonstrates the amount of city staff who joined us, as well as the full council and our two wonderful clerks. But I'm proud to represent to you the name of five firefighters to be appointed. The recommendation of the committee is to agree with the appointment of these gentlemen to the position of reserve firefighter. So my colleagues, to be aware, the chief let us know that there are currently 14 vacancies due to retirements and whatnot who have left the department. So of the 14 vacancies, there are nine names submitted, well, there were 10 names submitted to us, but consideration, we addressed five of them this particular evening. Next week, we will be interviewing another four. One has since dropped out. So this evening, the committee presents to you the agreement unanimously to accept the request of the appointment of Connor Colbert to the position of reserve firefighter, Nicholas Halloran, Jason Kenny, Sean Markey, I missed one, and Daniel Higgins, unanimously approved by all five. There is a preempt to this committee report that gives further detail about questions asked of administration and the Director of Personnel, who will get back to us at our meeting on the 20th to answer some of the questions of our colleagues. I ask for this report to be accepted as presented, sir.
All right, Counselor Rosetti asked for the report to be accepted as submitted. Any discussion? Seeing none, the committee report is laid on the table for approval.
Item number 31 is a report of committee on land use which met on April 29.
Counselor Ewan Campen.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Our meeting was a joint public hearing with the Planning Board, where we began by taking public comment on a map change proposal by property owners in Davis Square on the corner of Elm and Day. This is a, it's a proposal to upzone a property from the MR4 district to Commercial Core 4, which would slightly expand some of what they can do. Counselor Davis introduced the item and emphasized that this is an ongoing and very active community process around this. So he asked that the written comment period be extended until May 28, which both the committee and the Planning Board took. For anyone who's interested, the developers gave an extensive presentation, including a video shadow study, which I had never seen. We then held a public hearing on a number of proposed amendments. The simplest one has to do with making it easier to open body art tattoo shops, which are currently prohibited in pedestrian streets, for example, and require some onerous special permitting elsewhere. This is a proposed amendment from Counselor Niedergang, and that I anticipate will move forward in an upcoming meeting. There are three other proposed zoning amendments that I think will take a little bit more work. One of them is to allow in-loop payments instead of civic spaces for developments that are close to I-93 and the McGrath Highway. This will be deliberated additionally in upcoming meetings, and although we did not hear, there was one member of the public spoke to it, we've received a fair amount now of written comments raising issues, particularly as they relate to the McGrath Highway. And two additional items. One is to regulate the height of rooftop mechanical systems. That is from myself, and one from Counselor Davis, that would regulate the size of ground floor commercial spaces in the Small Business Overlay District. Both of those require a fair amount of kind of technical analysis and discussion. So at our next meeting, next Tuesday, we're working with the administration to invite a number of experts in the field to kind of, to give us feedback on some of the details of those two. And I anticipate that we will be continuing deliberations on those two items, those three items, in our upcoming weeks. And with that, I ask that the report be accepted.
All right, Counselor Ewan Campen asked for the report to be accepted as submitted. Seeing no discussion, committee report is laid on the table for approval.
Item number 32 is a report of committee on legislative matters which met on May 6.
Counselor Davis.
Thank you, Mr. President. Committee on Legislative Matters did meet on May 6. All members were present, and it was actually quite a lengthy discussion on a number of items. I would encourage folks to take a look at the minutes that are available online for a rundown of some of the discussion, and of course, the video that's available. We took up a number of items that we've been, that we've been working on for some time, and then also some new items that we will continue to monitor and come back to. But we also discussed three items that we will, I will request a vote on after the, after the report is hopefully accepted, two new ordinances, and one Home Rule petition. So in terms of the substance, the only thing I'd want to, a couple of things I just want to point folks to, there was some good discussion about, with the chief, Acting Chief Femenow, and we took a look at decriminalizing or deprioritizing arrests for drug possession. I want folks to understand that we, the intent there is that the department is very willing and are, in fact, working on a policy. For a variety of reasons, the committee elected not to pursue an ordinance specifically. There was some advice from the Solicitor's Office, although I think that, you know, some of the concerns are the same concern we'd heard on other ordinances that we then learned we, in fact, could pursue. That may well be the case here, but there was enough of a question that we ultimately decided, and Counselor McLaughlin and Klingon, who were the original makers of the motion, thought it best to agree and encourage the department to come, put together a formal policy, and then put together through the council, a, you know, a very sort of clear statement of policy and intent, so a resolution for the council to undertake. So we'll look forward to seeing that in the near future. There were, there was some discussion about the domestic partnership ordinance that remained in committee, some changes that I had proposed based on recent improvements that Cambridge made. I talked about those at the last meeting. Those are going to remain in committee. The Solicitor's Office is taking a look at a few issues just to make sure that there's no unintended consequences. And I would note that we also were contacted this week by an organization, a legal organization that has some expertise in this area, and they noted they have some feedback as well. So. as well. So we will look, I'll look forward to receiving that. We may ask them to, to come speak to the committee at a future meeting. We did, however, take up the related item, which was to, to generate a home rule petition. This was, I mentioned this at our last meeting, that the administration, it seems correctly, took the legal position that, that a, a domestic partner under the city's ordinance is not entitled to, to health benefits under the, under the GIC, which is the health insurance provider program that the, the city belongs to or, or participates in. And in my discussions with the administration, while unfortunately that does in fact seem to be the state of the law, the way to address that, other than, of course, choosing a different health insurance provider than GIC, would be to petition the, the state to allow us to treat domestic partners as a spouse for purposes of, of health insurance. So that's what this home rule petition says. It is a separate item, item number 48. So folks want to take a look at that as I'm finishing up the report. We talked about a, actually, a new item that was presented, looked, you know, frankly, was perfect as, as it was presented. This was a request to create an ordinance allowing workplace safety and a history of violations to be, to be used when reviewing any, well, any licenses or, or permits in the city. Director Anton Avica came to speak to the committee on that one, was very supportive of, of it, noted that there's some, some training and some, some, you know, enforcement that will be challenges that, that will exist, which, you know, we understand, particularly with something that's new, but ultimately everyone was in agreement that this was, it's a very simple ordinance. That's item 40, 49. The HRP is 48. I can't profess that correctly. So 48 is the home rule petition regarding the health insurance for domestic partners. 49 is the workplace safety ordinance. Those two I will ask for votes on to enroll and ordain. This evening, actually, I think the home petition will require an approval and whatever we do for a home petition. The final one is the, the leaf blower ordinance that we've been working on for several years, or at least well over a year. Counsel Niedergang has put in a, a lot of work on this, and we heard from the administration on several concerns, had a robust discussion, ultimately did make a few amendments that are reflected in the minutes. And I will ask, after the report is, is accepted, for, for that ordinance to be enrolled and ordained. Counsel Niedergang will give us a, a little sort of summary of that. I think Counsel Niedergang, if, if it might, might make sense to wait till we, till we have that specific item before us so that we can take care of the, approving the minutes, and then we will go straight to the leaf blower, item number 106, next, if the president would, would allow. And, and we can go from there. I, I think, you know, as always, I always suggest that we vote in the minutes now and ask questions on those three items separately as they come up. Somehow, that never works, but I'll ask it again. If you have questions or comments on the, on this report, I'm perfectly, I'd be happy to entertain them now. If there are questions or discussion about the specific items, so the leaf blower ordinance, the workplace safety ordinance, or the home petition for the domestic partnership ordinance, I will raise each of those separately after we approve the minutes. And my preference would be that I answer questions or we have discussion on those as it relates to those items, because if for no other reason, then they will be attached to the record for that specific item. And it'll be easy for folks to see that. So let's see if we can get it right this time. So with that, Mr. President, I request, I move that the report be accepted as submitted.
Counsel Davis moves to accept the committee report as submitted. Any discussion? Counsel Ballantyne?
I will wait. I have a question, but I can do it after the report.
Any further discussion? Here are none. Please call the roll on accepting the committee report as submitted.
Mr. President, we actually, on the table, I think, right? If there's no, we're not severing anything.
I think, approve the committee report and then take up the other items, right?
Very well, however you prefer.
All right, Mr. Clerk.
This is on approval of the committee report. Counselor Niedergang?
Yes.
Counselor White?
Yes.
Counselor Ballantyne?
Yes.
Counselor Ewan Campbell?
Yes.
Counselor Davis?
Yes.
Counselor Strezzo?
Yes.
Counselor Klingon?
Yes.
Counselor Mba?
Yes.
Counselor Scott?
Yes.
Counselor Rosetti?
Yes.
And Counsel McGlaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. President, all 11 councils have voted in favor of approving the committee report. That report is now approved.
Okay. Counsel Davis?
I move to take three items out of order in the following order. Item number 106, which is the leaf blower ordinance, item 49, which is the workplace safety history and history violations ordinance, and then item number 40, 40, I'm sorry, 106, 49, 48, in that order. So I move to take up item number 106 first, please.
All right. Mr. Clerk, please read item 106.
Item 106 is a communication from the Assistant City Solicitor who's submitting an ordinance to regulate the use of leaf blowers as approved by the Legislative Matters Committee on May 6th.
Counsel Davis.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to defer to my colleague from Ward 5 to give us a summary of this. He, Counsel Niedergang has put in the bulk of the, the legwork on this one, and it could be best to explain to us what, what we're trying to do, and, and we can go from there.
Counsel Niedergang.
Oh, thank you, Mr. President and Chair Davis. Mr. President and Chair Davis, let me ask for your advice on this. So as, as you both know, having, having worked on this ordinance on the Legislative Matters Committee, it's a very complicated ordinance with lots of different complicated provisions. And, you know, one could easily spend 10 or 15 minutes just summarizing it. You know, it's 10 o'clock now, and I'm not sure how long a summary would be appropriate. So I'm looking for some guidance from you, Mr. President. Do you want a five-minute summary, a one-minute summary, a couple of words and questions? I just, I don't want to just go on and on and on about something that I'm, know all the details about, but which nobody else may really, everybody may be prepared to vote for and then move on. So I just don't want to go on and on.
Well, I would say that, you know, this was a conversation in Legislative Matters Committee, and although we have taken a policy of having regular committee meetings, so we don't all spend, all 11 of us talk about the leaf blower ordinance, councilors are expected to come to these meetings with informed decisions or informed questions. I hope people have read the ordinance already. So I would err on the side of a briefer response. And if councilors have questions, then we can discuss that. Counsel Davis, do you have a comment on that?
Just real quick, Mr. President, thank you. And I, I understand and agree with your position. I think, you know, Counsel Niedergang, my, my view would be the, hit the high points that it's important for the public to understand, because it's not an easy ordinance to understand for anyone looking at it, even frankly, for us who've been wrestling with it for, you know, a long time. To me, that's, that's the most important thing for this purpose, is I agree with the president that hopefully our members have read it and understand it. But, you know, the public watches the city council meetings a lot more frequently than they've watched the, the committee meetings. So that would be my preference to, to hit those, hit those, those type of points.
All righty.
Well, before that, Counsel Rosetti, you had a comment?
Mr. President, I just wanted to say I appreciate receiving it in advance of the meeting. I did read it. I'm satisfied by it. So I'm, I am ready to vote in favor of it. Thank you.
Okay, very good. Counsel Niedergang, do you want to explain this briefly?
I appreciate Counsel Rosetti always does her homework. It's so wonderful. Thank you, Counsel Rosetti. I'll just, I'll just touch on some of the high points. So this ordinance was based on the Cambridge ordinance, which has been in effect since 2008. Now, the Cambridge, it's been very successful there. I've had conversations with a number of city councillors and ex-city councillors, and also reviewed public hearings where many people spoke. And it's actually been very successful in changing behavior around leaf blowers in Cambridge. Even though on the surface, the ordinance looks fairly weak, inconsistent, lots of exceptions, et cetera, I think the, the whole is much greater than the sum of the parts. In Cambridge, what they have done that's really helped the public, and I think everybody, to understand it, is the, they have put out regulations that, unlike the ordinance itself, are extremely clear. And when we spoke with Director Anton Avica of Inspection Services, his family actually has a landscaping business, so he understands a lot about leaf blowers. And he, I think, will, I feel pretty confident he'll do a good job of putting out regulations that will be really clear and explain the ordinance. I want to say, before I just give an overview of the details, to me, the worker protections in the ordinance are perhaps the most important part of it. And these are spelled out in detail in Cambridge's regulations. And the workers are the ones who are most subject to the ill effects, the ill health effects of these, if you excuse me, horrible machines, especially the gas-powered ones. The Cambridge regulations state clearly that employees must wear ear, respiratory, and eye protections, and that leaf blower operators and municipal contractors must provide each employee with a copy of the regulations. And I understand that's being done in multiple languages in Cambridge. So I expect that we will be doing something similar. In summerable, that there will be regulations on the city website, which anybody can read and understand clearly. The ordinance, to summarize it, designates specific dates and times when leaf blowers may and may not be used, and it sets operational requirements for equipment contractors and large property owners. So equipment is permissible that meets current EPA emission standards, so there are environmental, and the sound that they emit cannot exceed 65 decibels, and that's the manufacturer's rating. Leaf blowers in our ordinance can only be operated five months of the year, in the spring and the fall, and only on Monday, between Monday and Saturday, from 9:00 in the morning till 5:00 at night. So no Sundays and weekends. The ordinance applies to all residents, businesses, and property owners. However, commercial operators, landscaping companies, and large property owners have particular sections of the ordinance that apply to them, and commercial operators or any organization that employs two or more employees, excluding the city, are only allowed to use leaf blowers if they submit an operations plan which is approved by the Director of Inspection Services. And that operations plan details the equipment that they have and the requirements that, how they train their workers. So there are some exemptions in this ordinance, and that was what a lot of our discussion was around. City of Summerable workers and contractors are exempt from the limitations in the dates, times, and in the dates, the days, and the times of operation, they can use leaf blowers in about two dozen different city fields and parks, also to maintain the warranty or safety of rubberized playground surfaces, and to clean up after special events in squares or other locations. There's also a five-year sunset provision, which passed by a 3-2 vote in committee, and this would allow the city to use leaf blowers that it already owns that are louder than the 65 decibels. But all equipment purchased after the date that this ordinance is ordained, which hopefully will be tonight, must comply with a 65-decibel limit. So that was to allow DPW and REC to use equipment that they already have, rather than throw it all out and buy new stuff. Counsel Davis put in a de minimis exemption so that any person can use a leaf blower on the property where they live for five minutes a day on any day. And this was to enable people who are not able-bodied enough to use a rake or a broom or some other equipment to be able to clear their walkways for safety reasons. So that's it. I'll be honest, it's not as strong as I would have liked it, but I do believe it will make a difference. And I will be voting for it and wholeheartedly support its passage. Is, it is my hope that in the future, it will be strengthened. And as the technology of the batteries in particular, that the electric leaf blowers, which seem to be the wave of the future, use are improved, it would be possible, I think, to have even lower decibel limits and fewer exemptions. So that's my summary, and thank you all for listening to me on it.
All right. That was the brief version, I fear, hearing the long version. But thank you for the detailed explanation, Counsel Niedergang. Any further questions? Counsel Davis? Move to enroll and ordain. All right. Well, I just want to make sure there are no questions or comments before we move forward. All right. Counsel Davis moves to enroll and ordain. First, we need to approve the item. So let's do a roll call vote on approval.
Mr. President, it's a roll call vote on approval of item 106 being the leaf blower ordinance. Counselor Niedergang?
Yes.
Counselor White?
Yes.
Counselor Ballantyne?
Yes.
Counselor Ewan Campbell?
Yes.
Counselor Davis?
Yes.
Counselor Strezzo?
Yes.
Counselor Klingon?
Yes.
Counselor Mba?
Yes.
Counselor Scott?
Yes.
Counselor Rosetti?
Yes.
And Counsel McGlaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. President, all 11 councils have voted in favor of the ordinance. That is now approved.
All right. Counsel Davis, on ordainment, on enrollment?
On enrollment of that same ordinance. Counselor Niedergang?
Yes.
Counselor White?
Yes.
Counselor Ballantyne?
Yes.
Counselor Ballantyne? Counselor Ewan Campbell?
Yes.
Counselor Davis?
Yes.
Counselor Strezzo?
Yes.
Counselor Klingon?
Yes.
Counselor Mba?
Yes.
Counselor Scott?
Yes.
Counselor Rosetti?
Yes.
And Counsel McGlaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. President, all 11 councils have voted in favor of enrollment. That ordinance is now enrolled.
All right, on ordainment.
On ordainment of the leaf blower ordinance. Counselor Niedergang?
Yes.
Counselor White?
Yes.
Counselor Ballantyne?
Yes.
Counselor Ewan Campbell?
Yes.
Counselor Davis?
Yes.
Counselor Strezzo?
Yes.
Counselor Klingon?
Yes.
Counselor Mba?
Yes.
Counselor Scott?
Yes.
Counselor Rosetti?
Yes.
And Counsel McGlaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. President, all 11 councils have voted in favor of ordainment. That ordinance has now been ordained.
All right. Counsel Davis?
Mr. President, I move to take up item 49 out of order.
Counsel Davis moves to take item 49 out of order. Seeing no objection, please read the item.
Item 49 is a communication from the Assistant City Solicitor submitting an ordinance to authorize the denial, revocation, or suspension of permits due to workplace safety concerns.
Counsel Davis?
Thank you, Mr. President. As I mentioned in the committee report, this was, it's such a very simple ordinance. Hopefully, folks have had a chance to take a look at it. It's a paragraph long. It pretty much does exactly what the clerk just read. And as I mentioned, was fully supported by the administration. And so I would move to approve, enroll, and ordain.
All right. Counsel Davis moves for approval. Any discussion on this item? Here are none. Let's do a roll call vote on approval.
On approval of the workplace safety ordinance. Counselor Niedergang?
Yes.
Counselor White?
Yes.
Counselor Ballantyne?
Yes.
Counselor Ewan Campbell?
Yes.
Counselor Davis?
Yes.
Counselor Strezzo?
Yes.
Counselor Klingon?
Yes.
Counselor Mba?
Yes.
Counselor Scott?
Yes.
Counselor Rosetti?
Yes.
And Counsel McGlaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. President, all 11 councils have voted in favor of that ordinance. It has now been approved.
All right, let's enroll.
On enrollment, Counselor Niedergang?
Yes.
Counselor White?
Yes.
Counsel Ballantyne?
Yes.
Counsel Ewan Campbell?
Yes.
Counselor Davis? Counselor Davis?
Yes.
Counselor Strezzo?
Yes.
Counselor Klingon?
Yes.
Counselor Mba?
Yes.
Counselor Scott?
Yes.
Counselor Rosetti?
Yes.
And Counselor McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. President, all 11 councils have voted in favor of enrollment. That ordinance is now enrolled.
All right, on ordainment.
On ordainment of the worker safety ordinance, workplace safety ordinance, Counselor Niedergang?
Yes.
Counselor White?
Yes.
Counselor Ballantyne?
Yes.
Counselor Ewan Campen?
Yes.
Counselor Davis?
Yes.
Counselor Strezzo?
Yes.
Counselor Klingon?
Yes.
Counselor Mba?
Yes.
Counselor Scott?
Yes.
Counselor Rosetti?
Yes.
And Counselor McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. President, all 11 councils have voted in favor of ordainment. The workplace safety ordinance is now ordained.
All right, Counselor Davis?
Thank you, Mr. President. Two down, one to go. I move to take up item 48 out of order.
All right, please read item 48.
Item 48 is communications submitted by the Chief Labor Council submitting a home rule petition to define a domestic partner as a spouse independent in Somerville.
Counselor Davis?
Thank you, Mr. President. As I mentioned in the committee report, this came out of a request or a, um, looking into whether there was a way to ensure that our domestic partnership ordinance allowed domestic partners to enjoy the benefits of the city's healthcare, health insurance. And unfortunately, according to state law, the state has already told the city of, or the courts have actually told the city of Boston that, nope, you can't do that under GIC. So I was advised by the administration that the way to do this, at least as it relates to the city of Somerville, would be to submit a home rule petition. So that's what this does. It's a two-part home rule petition. One is very clear and straightforward, that it requests to allow the city to commit to consider a domestic partnership to be a dependent, as that term is used in GIC, the General Insurance Commission rules, so that a domestic partner could be entitled to that insurance. And then secondly, to allow Somerville to consider a domestic partner to be this, have the same spousal rights, anywhere that a spouse is granted rights under the general laws of commonwealth. Two-part petition, fairly straightforward, happy to answer any questions. But barring any, I would move to, remind me if I have to ask the court to remind me what exactly we do, we just approve this and send it up to the Hill, I think. But whatever it is, whatever we're supposed to move, that's what I move.
Counselor Davis moves for approval. I think this requires just one vote. But on this, Counselor Ballantyne?
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Through you to the Chair of the Committee. I have two questions. The first one might seem a little odd, but why does the state not, uh, why does state law deny domestic partnership? Did anything come up in your discussions about that?
So, to be clear, the Boston case was specific to applying in health insurance benefits under GIC to a domestic partner. So it was a very, you know, a very narrow decision. And that's, that's actually the exact question that I raised to the Solicitor's office initially. Just so happened, there was unfortunately a case that was directly on point. And the, my recollection from the Solicitor's letter was that it, the court focused really on the words, and it says, I think it said, you know, matrimony or spouse, there was some, some marriage adjacent words that the court sort of hung their hat on in saying that a domestic partner is not that thing, and therefore not entitled to insurance benefits. Does that answer the question?
Yeah, I, thank you. And then I have a follow-up question through you, Mr. President, to the Chair of the Committee. So I know in the state of Massachusetts, I mean, the first healthcare law that passed, what was it, in the 90s was, and it was, uh, it was unique, and one of its kind in the country was all children under the age of 12 are required to, they get health insurance. And that then expanded with the Affordable Care Act. So how does Massachusetts, Mass Health view domestic partnerships? Is there anything that can be learned in terms of, of how Mass Health looks at this?
Mr. President, I may?
Mr. Counselor Davis?
Thank you. Through you to Counsel Ballantyne. I don't know the answer to that, because we were specifically looking at GIC, the city's health, health insurance provider. But as I mentioned in the committee report, there, the changes to our domestic partnership ordinance are still in committee, and I hope to speak with the Chosen Family Legal Counsel, Legal Group. I apologize for not, perhaps not remembering their exact name, but some folks who have legal expertise in this area, and I'd be happy to raise that question, and, you know, perhaps I have to think about whether the changes that are before us are appropriate to have them discuss that issue, or if maybe we need to put a separate issue, you know, a separate order in. But, yeah, we could, we could ask if they have any, any expertise in that. It's a very good question. For the purposes of our ordinance, you know, we always, we recognize the limitations that works, that were sort of conveyed to us through the Solicitor's office, that, you know, what we can do with domestic partnerships is, you know, within the, you know, the city's limits. And so that was sort of, you know, that was the extent of our, of our, of our efforts based on this Solicitor's advice.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. President, to the Chair. Then one final question, because I remember when this ordinance came up, and we first took it up, it was to allow that, as I understood it, that technicality, um, that some, uh, some residents of Somerville, in order for them to be able to go on their spouse's health insurance, you know, we needed, it would be good, they needed some, some legal document, which is a domestic partnership that could be issued by a local municipality, so it could be used for insurance. So, um, so my question is, does, or where it goes is, we're asking about the GIC, but then it seems to me then another, other questions was, does the domestic partnership do anything for any of the other types of insurance or insurance companies that are out there that offer Somerville residents insurance through their employer? Do you understand where I'm getting at? I'm just, I mean, if we're going to address this, it seems like we should just address as many parts of it as we can.
Counselor Davis?
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you to the good counsel from Ward 7. I do understand the question, that's a good question. We, we did, there was some discussion of this in committee when we brought up, when we were discussing the ordinance initially, because as you recall, Somerville never had a domestic partnership ordinance, as opposed to, whereas other cities did prior to marriage equality becoming the law of the Commonwealth. And, you know, our stated intent was that we want to, you know, we want to clearly establish that, you know, domestic partnership in this, in the city is recognized, and, and sort of the approach we took was, anyone who wants to use that, you know, it gives them, it gives them, you know, to use the cliche again, that, you know, a hook on which to hang their hat. We, you know, we can't dictate or deem that any other insurance provider has to recognize that, but we certainly hoped that perhaps some would, and we, the ordinance was drafted specifically to, you know, to try and allow any, anywhere where it would be, you know, have, have legal relevance or legal impact for it to do so, provided that, of course, you know, it, by no means would change state or federal law. We included that, because, you know, that, this Solicitor's Office advised it's not within our power, little old city council here. So, the, you know, the extent to which that does or does not qualify someone for, for insurance under another provider, or any benefit frankly, under any other authority, would be up to that authority. And if they chose to, to say, well, if you're a domestic partner in Somerville, then that's all we need. We need an official certificate, you have it, that's good enough for us. That, that would be their, their discretion. So I don't know how it applies to Mass Health, but that is an interesting question that I, I will look into. You know, beyond that, it's, as I said, that we drafted it to allow that, recognizing our limitations to not be able to, that we, you know, we couldn't deem or dictate that beyond the city limits.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Mr. President. I, I don't remember what the initial order or ordinance item was on this when it was first submitted. Did it specifically say GIC? So I'm just asking, why GIC only? And why now?
Counselor Davis?
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you to the counsel from Ward 7. So, the reason, I touched upon this two weeks ago when I introduced it, the, the reason that it came up now is because our intent, and frankly, part of what we discussed in, in creating the domestic partnership ordinance, was that we at least thought that, that for city employees, their domestic partners would be entitled to health insurance. We were operating under the belief that that would be the case. Unfortunately, when folks went to try and do that, they were told, no, you can't, you're not eligible, it doesn't work. And when I pressed the Solicitor's Office on that point, the city Solicitor came back with a, you know, I don't know if it was a formal opinion, but, you know, an explanation that the city of Boston had, had gone to court over that exact question, and the courts had said, no. The way that the GIC law is, is written, you can't allow those benefits to domestic partners. And it was, you know, I've never shied away from expressing a counter opinion to the Solicitor's Office when I felt it was appropriate. In this case, you know, it was spot on. I mean, there's, I had, I felt it was entirely appropriate. And so in, in having a conversation with the administration, and I confess, I said this in the committee meeting, I can't remember who it was, it might have been the mayor, it might have been the city solicitor, but it said, you know, the one thing we could do was, would be to, it might have been one of the assistant solicitors, that the one thing we could do would be to set up a home rule petition, and, and ask the state to allow us to, to treat domestic partners the same as we would, as a dependent under GIC, specifically to that point, because we wanted to be able to, at the very least, provide health benefits to, to our domestic partners here in the city. And so that's why the specificity of Part 1 of the home rule petition, you know, Part 2 is, is a more general, and to whatever else, other extent there's, we're able to treat a domestic partner as a spouse, as that concept exists under state law, we'd like to be able to do that as well.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. Chair, for repeating this a few times. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Counselor White?
Thank you, Mr. President. I know that can help Counselor Ballantyne a bit, going back in history. Before same-sex marriages were recognized, many companies wanted to provide benefits to their employees who couldn't marry their partner. So domestic partnership ordinances were enacted so that folks could record, basically, because they still couldn't get married, but they viewed themselves as equivalent to being married, so they would file and obtain one of those, and insurance companies, our employers who had health insurance companies would then allow their employees to utilize that to give, to cover health insurance for their domestic partner. Once same-sex marriages were legalized, and I did some research on this, and pretty much universally, health employers basically eliminated the domestic partnership option, and instead said they'll treat same-sex couples as other couples, and, you know, anyone who was married, the spouse can obtain the health insurance. So generally, that's why I believe that there's probably very little health insurance coverage now just with domestic partners, and instead the employees who provide, the employers who provide the benefits require they to be married. So I think like the GIC, now I don't recall, because I wasn't part of the GIC, I don't think back then, whether the GIC at that point recognized domestic partnership, and then changed it basically to require that there be a marriage. So now they clearly don't, and that's the reason for the home rule petition. I don't know with Mass Health, but I would assume it may be the same, that they would require a marriage, because they now recognize same-sex marriages.
Any further discussion on the motion? Here are none, let's call a roll on approval in the home rule petition.
On approval of the home rule petition to define domestic partners as a spouse independent in Somerville. On that motion, Counselor Niedergang?
Yes.
Counselor White?
Yes.
Counselor Ballantyne?
Yes.
Counselor Ewan Campen?
Yes.
Counselor Davis?
Yes.
Counselor Strezzo?
Yes.
Counselor Klingon?
Yes.
Counselor Mba?
Yes.
Counselor Scott?
Yes.
Counselor Rosetti?
Yes.
And Counselor McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. President, all 11 councils have voted in favor of that home rule petition. It's been approved.
Next item.
Turning to the regular order business, we go to item number 33, which is a report of committee on licenses and permits, which met on April 26th.
Counselor White?
Thank you, Mr. President. We met on April 26th, with myself presiding and committee members, Mba and J.C. Scott present. There's a couple of routine matters that are clearly set forth in the committee report. There's one item that does require a little bit of discussion because of the imposition by the committee of a condition on the renewal of the permit. So that item is 211524, renewing a junk dealer's license. Now, looking at that, a junk dealer's license actually covers a couple of different things. One is a junk dealer, but the second is, this is the license that we use for pawnbrokers. And the entity that was before us, Tush Enterprises, is the only pawnbroker that is located and licensed in the city of Somerville. We had the applicant, and there was also an individual who had basically filed an opposition. We had scheduled a show cause hearing, but as the renewal would take place on May 1st, we combined that show cause petition with the renewal. Now, we had extensive discussion, we allowed the applicant to present evidence, he was represented by counsel, and we also listened to the opponent. Two items arose out of that. One was the interest rate that was charged. According to the opponent, there was an interest rate of 120% that was charged, but the concern before the committee was that, as a city, we had never enacted a percentage interest limitation, and state law basically sends it to the local communities to impose that. So because we hadn't done that, we did not use that as a rationale for the condition of the imposed. Instead, you will see attached the committee report the ticket that the applicant uses, and that ticket clearly does not meet the requirements of Massachusetts general law, because as you'll see, as one can see on the ticket, basically, the applicant said that after a failure to, to pay within the four-month period, the applicant could sell it, and tactically he could keep it himself. Now, the state does not want that, because the state basically, especially with people pawn items, who are in financial difficulty, they treat it as a mortgage foreclosure, basically, to make it easy. So what Mass General Law, Chapter 140, Section 71 states, that articles deposited in pawn with a licensed pawnbroker shall, unless redeemed, be retained by him on the premises for at least four months after the date of deposit. After the expiration of that period of time, he may sell the articles by public auction, and then apply the proceeds satisfaction of the debt, and then the, and the expense of the auction, and then any surplus is supposed to go to the person who presented the pawn. So that provides, you know, substantial protection. And it is clear, based on the testimony of the applicant, and the ticket that was submitted to the committee, the applicant has not complied with that law. And... And through the discussions, basically, the applicant said, well, it's an outdated law, it doesn't, you know, the current world of pawnbrokers, and he was going to have somebody from the National Pawnbrokers Association ask him to come before us, but basically, that's all irrelevant. The state law applies, and it is clear, based on the record and the testimony of the applicant, that he failed to comply with state law. And our permits require that an individual who takes, who gets a permit comply with state law. So based on the facts that were presented before us, I moved that it appears that the applicant has not been complying with provisions of Mass General Law, Chapter 140, Section 71, and due to this, the committee will impose conditions. So that motion was approved. And then I moved to impose the conditions. I moved that the license extension is conditioned in the provision that no additional items are taken, our loans issued on a pawnbroker basis, and that items are disposed of unless the applicant complies with all provisions of Mass General Law, Chapter 140, Section 71. That was approved by the committee unanimously, and then we moved to extend it for 30 days. The applicant and opponent were also given, you know, 30 days to submit any additional evidence that they want before us. But the other issue was that because this license also applies to the individual selling of basically second-hand goods, the pawn brokerage violation may or may not impact that prior to license. So I want to consult with the city solicitor before we have our next meeting. So basically, based on, again, the testimony and the record and the motions that were approved in committee, I would ask that the committee report be accepted as submitted. And I also note that our city clerk has submitted as number 50, an item from the ordinance stating for us to regulate pawnbrokers.
All right. Counselor White moves to accept the committee report as submitted. Any discussion? See and none. This committee report is laid on the table for approval. Counselor White, did you want to take that other item up now?
No, I think that'll just be read, and I'll ask the 50, when the time comes, go to the committee on licenses and permits, because of our familiarity with the requirements of state law.
Very good. Next item, please.
Item Number 34 is a report of committee on Public Health and Public Safety, meeting on May 3rd.
Counsel Davis.
Thank you, Mr. President. Public Health and Public Safety did meet as a regular committee on May 3rd. There were a mere 38 or so items on the, 35 items on the agenda. Given the time, I won't spend more than a few minutes on each of them. I'm kidding. So what I do want to emphasize is that this meeting was really the first, maybe the second meeting that, since I took over the chair of this committee at your request, Mr. President, where we really focused on the things that I was, you know, excited and wanted to focus on over a year ago. And of course, our weekly meetings, committee of the whole, throughout the COVID crisis have kept us from this really important work. So I'm really happy that we were able to sort of get back to what I feel, not that the COVID work was not important, it certainly was, but these are also incredibly critical issues. And it's, this is not the entire list of important things that we have before the committee. So I was really happy to get back to these. The minutes of this meeting are very detailed, so I will encourage folks to just take a look at those. I will note, just from a high level, you know, the things that we talked about were restorative justice in policing, our approach to drug possession arrests, that we look at behavioral health perspective in community outreach. There was also some discussion about transparency, consistent with the discussions that I mentioned in legislative matters, where the police department was, you know, very open, and in fact, had already had plans to post on a regular basis the links to the crime stats and crime records that are already sort of in the website somewhere, so to make that more transparent, more accessible. So we're, you know, happy to hear that. And then we were joined by, well, we'd already been joined by Director of Health and Human Services Doug Cress, and we were joined by Mike Libby, who's the director of the Somerville Homeless Coalition. We had a protracted discussion about what we can do and how, other ways we can help our neighbors who are experiencing homelessness. And, you know, read the minutes, look at the video. The takeaway there was that the committee, and I particularly really pressed the administration to give us solid steps. Give us, you know, we've talked about this a lot. We say, well, here's the things we could do, we could do that, we could do this, but we're not actually doing it. So, you know, we've talked about Portland blues, the fancy self-cleaning public toilets that we would love to put, that are also very expensive, we'd love to put around the city. Great. Until we can get them, let's put some porta-potties up and figure out a way to put them in a place where they're safe and monitor them, whatever. I said I'll take, I'll volunteer for a shift and, you know, check in and clean, or whatever we have to do, so that we can help folks who don't have access to basic human needs throughout the day and overnight. We talked about the need for additional people, and actually Director Libby mentioned this specifically, that one of their biggest needs is people who have expertise in building relationships with people who are experiencing, you know, a situation where they don't have a house to go back to at night. So, you know, those social workers, those caseworkers, and so, you know, my request to the administration was, give us a request. You know, if it's 1, 5, 10, you know, 2 next week, and 6 more in the budget, whatever the case may be, we've heard this over and over, why are we not asking for money and putting job descriptions out there? Well, let's do this. We know this is one of the biggest needs. And then the other thing that came up was, you know, there's been a number of items, now Counselor McGlaughlin has submitted some, there's others for a warming center, cooling center, engagement center, day facility, you know, why are we not, we know this is a big need, why are we not talking about that? Why are we not looking at locations? I threw out the idea of 45 College App, which the city owns, and, you know, to the best of my knowledge, we, last I heard, we're still looking for a plan or trying to figure out what to do with that. Maybe that's a good location. Maybe it's not. I don't know. I'm willing to listen to the experts on that, but let's have that conversation so that we can, you know, as we start to transition out of a COVID world, the, you know, increased needs of people in our community are, you know, all the more apparent and all the more pressing, and now is the time to do something in the short term, something in the medium term, and something in the long term, to try and address those. So I challenge the administration to give us some quick responses and some quick answers, things we can do next week, things we can do in a few months, and things we can do, you know, in a year or more timeframe, so that we can address these. We know what we need. We've heard it over and over and over. Let's do it. So that's the extent of the report. I requested, moved that it be accepted as submitted.
I let the record show that Counselor Davis has first shift on cleaning and monitoring porta-potties. He moves to accept the committee report as submitted. Any discussion? See and none. The committee report is laid on the table for approval.
Item 35 is a report of special committee on rules, which met on May 11th.
White.
Thank you, Mr. President. Everyone's favorite topic. I'll make it quick. I would ask that Items 104 and 105 also be read, because they relate to the committee report.
Mr. Clerk, please read the two items. Mr. Clerk, you there?
Mr. President, Item 104 is a communication from the city clerk submitting revised amendments to the rules of the city council to make them gender neutral. And Item 105 is a communication from the city clerk submitting amendments to City Council Rule 9 to clarify the review, approval, and consideration for release of the minutes of executive sessions.
Counsel White.
Thank you, Mr. President. Real quick, Rule 9 is the rule that deals with executive session minutes, and we discussed it, and Counselor Davis made an amendment, so, which basically requires members of the committee to request within seven days of the adjournment of the executive session to have the opportunity to review them. Otherwise, it will be up to the chair of the committee or the president of the board to approve that. The city clerk, so that item was work completed, and now the city clerk has submitted as Item 111. The city clerk's, I'm sorry, is Item 105, the city clerk's compliance with that. Then there was Item 211493, the city clerk's amending amendments to the city council to make them gender neutral. That was on the initiative of the city clerk, and, you know, withdrew them thoroughly. Upon review, Counselor Davis was concerned sort of with the flow of it, and wanted to use the pronouns "they" and "their" were appropriate. So this item also was designated as work completed, and the city clerk has submitted Item 104 in compliance with the committee's request. And then the next item was the city clerk submitted three amendments for the purposes described therein. A couple of them are pretty technical. One of them is technical, the other one dealt with about the use of the chambers for weddings, and the problem is that outside people as well, justice is the peace or whatever, were trying to use the chambers, and it ended up to the point that it was disrupting city use. There was also a discussion about streamlining of a rule by the city clerk, basically to allow the president to sort of handle the opening ceremonies, and part of that included the removal of the language of the prayer. Counselor Rosetti had a concern, I'm sorry, about the salute to the flag, and Counselor Rosetti was concerned about the deletion from our rule of the salute to the flag. So that was kept in. So that item was approved, the city clerk's admission was approved, with the salute to the flag remaining therein. So I would ask that the committee report be accepted, and then an affirmative vote on Items 104 and 105.
All right. Counsel White moves to accept the committee report as submitted. On that, Counselor Mbah.
Oh, no. President McGlaughlin, that one, that was for Chairman Davis' report, but it's all good. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Any further discussion on the committee report? Hear and none. Please call the roll on accepting the committee report.
Mr. President, this is on acceptance of the special committee on rules. Committee report just presented. On acceptance, Counselor Niedergang.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Valentine.
Yes.
Counselor Ewan Campen.
Yes.
Counselor Davis.
Yes.
Counselor Strezzo.
Yes.
Counselor Klingon.
Yes.
Counselor Mbah.
Yes.
Counselor Scott.
Yes.
Counselor Rosetti.
Yes.
And Counselor McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Mr. President, 11 councils have voted in favor. That committee report has been accepted.
Okay. Do we need any more actions there, Mr. Clerk?
Mr. President, 104 and 105 require individual votes.
Okay. Very good. On Item 104, Counselor Davis.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just briefly, I thank you to the good chair for his report. I want to just make one clarification, because I think it's important, because frankly, my request was as much symbolic as anything anyways. So the reason I asked for some tweaks to the approach was primarily just to make the point of using the pronouns "they," "them," or "their," "they" are as singular, because it's entirely appropriate to do so. And I know that folks sometimes have a hard time getting their head around that, when that is someone's preferred pronoun, and so where we have the opportunity to, we ought to normalize that. It has the side benefit of making the language a little more streamlined. The primary intent there was, you know, really just to make a point of using "they" and "them" or "their" as a singular pronoun in our rules, so that, you know, we set an example.
Very good. Drew, any further discussion on Item 104? Let's do a roll call vote.
On the approval of the rules of the city council with gender-neutral amendments, Counselor Niedergang.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Valentine.
Yes.
Counselor Ewan Campen.
Yes.
Counselor Davis.
Yes.
Counselor Strezzo.
Yes.
Counselor Klingon.
Yes.
Counselor Mbah.
Yes.
Counselor Scott.
Yes.
Counselor Rosetti.
Yes.
And Counselor McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Mr. President, 11 councils have voted in favor of that rule. That amendment to the rules has been adopted.
All right. Next rule.
The next one is rule, the rule presented at Item Number 105 with respect to executive session reviews or minutes. On that rule, Counselor Kling, Counselor Niedergang.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Valentine.
Yes.
Counselor Ewan Campen.
Yes.
Counselor Davis.
Yes.
Counselor Strezzo.
Yes.
Counselor Klingon.
Yes.
Counselor Mbah.
Yes.
Counselor Scott.
Yes.
Counselor Rosetti.
Yes.
And Counselor McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Mr. President, again, 11 councils have voted in favor of that amendment. That amendment to the rules has been adopted.
All right. Next item.
We move to the communications of the mayor. And the first one is, request the mayor, requesting appropriation and authorization to borrow $2,520,000 in a bond for building improvements.
Counselor Scott.
Mr. President, I would ask that this be sent to committee, as well as that we waive the reading of a number of these and send these to committee as well.
All right. Well, let's send this first one to Finance Committee. Next items.
If I could move that we waive the readings of, oh, man, I don't have the item numbers. I have all the items for me.
Do you want to pull off the items we are doing first?
3 to 45, Counselor Scott.
Some of these we'd like to, we'll take up tonight. So I tell you what, Mr. President, rather than waiving the readings, let's just read them all in order and dispose of them as they come.
The old-fashioned way. Next item, Mr. Clerk.
37 is a request of the mayor requesting approval to appropriate $21,000 and change from the tree stabilization fund for the tree health program.
Counselor Scott.
Yes, Mr. President. This is specifically in relation to a few specific trees and a few specific parks. I'm not clear on why our Buildings and Grounds Department isn't handling this, or our Parks Department, but there is already $60,000 in the professional and technical services line. The contract that they settled on was for $81,000. So I would encourage approval of this tonight with a note that we will be revisiting it when it comes to budget season, to understand why we're contracting this out.
All right. Counselor Scott moves to approve. Any discussion? Hear and none. This item will be laid on the table for approval, and Mr. Clerk, if anything requires an individual roll call vote, please let me know, otherwise we'll keep moving.
That was one, Mr. President. Item 37 requires a roll call, because it's a stabilization fund appropriation.
Roll call vote.
On the approval of Item 37 regarding the tree stabilization fund, Counselor Niedergang.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Valentine.
Yes.
Counselor Ewan Campen.
Yes.
Counselor Davis.
Yes.
Counselor Strezzo.
Yes.
Counselor Klingon.
Yes.
Counselor Mbah.
Yes.
Counselor Scott.
Yes.
And Counselor McGlaughlin.
Yes. Did you have Counselor Rosetti?
I just assumed she was in. Sorry, Counselor Rosetti.
Good job, John. Thank you. Thank you, Matt. Yes, 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 yes.
I apologize. Thank you. 11 councils have voted in favor of that item.
You're fired, John, effective July. That's bottom.
Item Number 38 is requesting, the mayor requesting approval of a transfer of $35,000 from the Fire Department Personal Services salaries account to the Fire Alarm Personal Services overtime account to cover a deficit due to a long-term sick leave.
Counselor Scott.
This is just exactly what it says, there have been long-term This is just exactly what it says, there have been long-term sick leave in fire alarm, and we've had 10 vacancies in the fire department, so a simple cross-departmental transfer, move for approval.
All right, motion to approve, any discussion? Do we need a roll call for this one?
No, we don't.
All right, laid on the table for approval.
Item 39 is request the mayor requesting approval of a transfer of $8,000 in this council's budget from the professional and technical services account to the salary and wages temporary account to continue funding staff to develop a civilian oversight process for the police department.
Councillor Scott.
This is to continue the employment of Mason and Aream who have been serving ably and dedicatedly, even if only in a part-time basis, so I move approval tonight.
All right, motion to approve, any discussion? Here are none, this item is laid on the table for approval.
Item 40 is request the mayor requesting approval to pay prior year invoices totaling $5,212.98 using available funds, the information technology, internet maintenance and lease photocopier accounts.
Councillor Scott.
Uh, there are multiple invoices here, the Crown Castle one is for our school's internet pipe, it's complicated, involves E-rate and miscalculation from their invoice, so we're fixing it. There's some Comcast invoices from fiscal year 20, and some Sharp copier invoices that never got sent to purchasing, so they're being consolidated and requesting approval tonight.
All right, councillor Scott moves to approve, any discussion? Here are none, this item is laid on the table for approval.
Item 41 is request the mayor requesting approval to pay a prior year invoice totaling $756 using available funds in the arts council's revolving account for Medford Fire Detail Services for the fireworks.
Fireworks, all right, councillor Scott.
Medford just figured out that we owe their firefighters some money, so please move to approve tonight.
All right, any discussion? See you none, this item is laid on the table for approval.
Item 42 is request the mayor requesting approval to pay prior year invoices totaling $387.30 using available funds in the infrastructure and asset management fee account for delinquent EZ Pass toll invoices.
The wire continues, councillor Scott.
After finding several thousand dollars of years-old invoices, we apparently found more, please send this to committee so I can look into it.
This item will refer to the finance committee.
Item 43 is request the mayor requesting acceptance for a $3,000 grant with no new match required from the housing authority to the arts council for support of the Mystic Bureau project.
Councillor Scott.
Please move.
Any discussion? Here are none, this item is laid on the table for approval.
And item number 44 is request the mayor requesting approval of a time only extension for the Robinson Green Beretta Corporation contract for construction administration at the Buena Vista Garage through August.
Councillor Scott.
Uh, I'd like to understand this a little better, please send it to committee.
This item is referred to finance.
And item number 45 is a request of the mayor requesting approval to amend a contract with design consultants for an additional two years and $53,000 and change for final work related to the Beacon Street roadway construction project.
Councillor Scott.
At this late hour, I believe there is a crowd of pitchforks and torches outside wondering why two more years is needed on Beacon Street. This has long been, this has long needed more supervision, please send this to committee, I'd like to understand what's happening here.
As long as they're not outside of my house, this item is referred to the finance committee.
Do they have a permit?
We'll find out.
I'm sorry, I haven't been keeping up on the screen, but that brings us up to item number 46.
Mr. President.
Councillor Rosetti.
I move to waive the readings of items 46 and 47, refer to confirmation of appointments, please.
All right, these two items are referred to confirmation of appointments. Councillor White. Oh, no, no, not you yet, never mind.
We moved item number 50, which is communication from the city clerk submitting a proposed amendment of Article 3 of Chapter 8, the junk dealer ordinance.
This item is referred to license, oh, this is you, councillor White, did you want to comment on this?
Oh, I think we'll just have it go to licenses and permits and we'll try to deal with this expeditiously, so we do have something on the books.
All right, this item is referred to license and permits.
Item number 51 is a communication from the director of water and sewer submitting the fiscal year 22 water and sewer volumetric rate recommendation.
This item will refer to finance.
52 is a communication from the water and sewer director of administration conveying testimony received relative to the proposed fiscal year 22 water and sewer rates.
This item is laid on the table, placed on file with a copy sent to finance.
53 is a communication from the director of infrastructure and asset management conveying the water and sewer capital investment plan update for April 2021.
This item is laid on the table, placed on file with a copy sent to finance.
Item number 54 is a communication from the director of intergovernmental affairs responding to a council item regarding expunging police records.
This item is laid on the table and placed on file.
And item 55 is communication from the memorialization committee conveying the naming of a new street, Harold Cohen Street, which runs between Foley Street and Revolution Drive.
This item is laid on the table and placed on file. Councillor White.
Mr. President, you know, it's only 11 o'clock, so we have a good hour before midnight, and I'm going to follow the lead of councillor Scott, and I'm going to ask that each license and permits item be read.
I guess so you know, I have 30 late items.
I don't want to be lynched. Mr. Chair, I move to waive the readings of items 56 through 82, and 110, and 111, and ask that they all be approved this evening.
All right, councillor White moves to waive the readings of said items and approve. Any discussion? These items are laid on the table for approval.
That moves us up to item number 83, which is communication from 13 registered voters requesting the adoption of an amendment to the zoning ordinance to revise the Boynton Yards sub-overlay area.
This item is referred to the land use committee with a copy sent to the planning board.
And item 84 is a communication from those same 13 registered voters requesting the adoption of an amendment to the zoning map to revise the Boynton Yards sub-overlay area.
This item is referred to the land use committee with a copy sent to the planning board.
Item 85 is communication from Tufts University responding to a council item about the internet, about an international master plan and limiting housing.
On the item, councillor Strezzo.
Thank you, Mr. President. Is this, with this question, is this referring to some work in the Housing and Community Development Committee?
Oh, this is an item that I would place on file, but if you would like to discuss it in housing, we can send a copy there.
I'm wondering, I was expecting a communication to come through, and I'm wondering if this was it, so.
This is the communication, councillor Ballantyne would probably know best about this, about institutional master plan to address how this, I think this is a response to her previous order, actually.
It might be housed in Housing and Community Development Committee, so if that is the case, I'm wondering if it could be sent there.
Okay, this item is laid on the table, placed on file with a copy sent to Housing Community Development.
Thank you.
Item 86 is a communication from Nancy Train submitting comments regarding the body art services zoning ordinance amendment.
On the item, councillor Ba.
Mr. President, I wanted to just, you know, like, put my two cents for item 83 and 84, for the communication.
If it's all right with you, councillor Ba, I've already referred them to committee, and we will have a full discussion about that. Motorcycle passing by. I think we'll have plenty of time to have that conversation.
Okay, that's fine, okay, thank you, Mr. President.
Next item.
Go to item number 88, which is an order submitted by councillor Niedergang, well, first of all, 86 was placed on file, Mr. President?
Laid on the table, placed on file.
Item 88.
Mr. President, we can waive the reading of item 88, it was a repetition of an order that councillor Ewan Campen submitted.
Okay, and did you get 87, councillor, Mr. Clerk?
87 has been addressed earlier, you know, in councillor Niedergang's comments on the I-93 system.
All right, item number 88 is laid on the table for approval.
89 is an order submitted by councillor Davis, Commissioner of Public Works, reactivate the pedestrian cross signal at Morrison and College Ave, and report to the War 6 councillor if there's any reason it can't be done within one week from tonight.
Councillor Davis. Laid on the table for approval.
Very good. Item number 90 is an order submitted by councillor Strezzo, the director of economic development provides small businesses with a contact list to reach someone within 24 to 40 hours while city officers are closed and operating under the mayor's COVID-related executive order.
Councillor Strezzo.
Of explanatory, thank you very much, Mr. President.
Laid on the table for approval.
Item number 91 is an ordinance, an order submitted by councillor Strezzo, the city solicitor advised in writing and appear before the committee on housing and community development discuss how extensively the Encore Casino has been in compliance with its surrounding community agreement.
Councillor Strezzo.
Of explanatory, please send it to my committee, thank you.
Laid on the table for approval with a copy sent to Housing Community Development.
Very good. Item number 92 is a request, the mayor requesting appropriation of $630,000 from the unreserved fund balance to the ADA improvements fund account for ADA building accessibility improvements.
Yeah, I was getting late, this item is referred to finance.
Item 93 is a request of the mayor requesting approval of a transfer of $1,000 in the grants development department from the professional and technical services account to the salaries account to fund the grant writers' increased hours.
Any discussion? Here are none, this item is laid on the table for approval.
Item 94 is a request of the mayor requesting acceptance of a $75,000 donation from Tufts University pursuant to the 2014 to 2018 partnership agreement with the city.
Any discussion? Here are none, this item is laid on the table for approval.
Item 95 is request the mayor requesting the approval of the surveillance technology impact report for an SBCD drone.
Any discussion? I have no idea what this is, so I'm going to refer to legislative matters.
Yes.
And 96 is a request, the mayor requesting approval of a surveillance technology impact report for co-ward app license plate collection.
This item will refer to legislative matters.
Mr. President.
Councillor Rosetti.
Uh, I would like the clerk to read items 97 through 100 collectively, and then I'd like to reference that, please.
All right, councillor Rosetti likes to read 97 through 100, please read the items, Mr. Clerk.
Item 97 is request the mayor requesting confirmation of the appointment of Robert Buchanan to the planning board. 98 is request the mayor requesting confirmation of the appointment of Erin Geno to the planning board. 99 is request the mayor requesting confirmation of the appointment of Deborah Howard Easton as an alternate member of the planning board. And 100 is request the mayor requesting confirmation of the appointment of Russell Pildes as an alternate member of the planning board.
Councillor Rosetti, you look so mysterious right now.
I moved my seat, my back was killing me. Mr. President, three of you two are colleagues, I just wanted you all to be aware, I have been having conversation with city staff the last few months, planning board will be in jeopardy if not having a quorum for a case coming up before them. We were going to be interviewing one or two, I, this afternoon learned it's four, that the interview committee has put forward. So it's this Tuesday that the confirmation of appointments committee will be interviewing these four candidates for the planning board, as well as that same evening, we will be interviewing the director of inspectional services. This is an important board, if anybody wishes it to be of the whole, I know, Mr. President, you prefer committees do their work, which we all have been doing valiantly. By open meeting law, I need to know by early tomorrow morning or tonight. So I just wanted you all to be made aware that Tuesday evening, we will be interviewing these four planning board candidates along with the director of ISD.
Any discussion? Here are none, I personally, of course, really feel like we've been doing a good job with regular committee meetings, and then everyone has full ability to have conversations during full council meetings, and we've had divided votes that have been resolved during full council meetings. So I would, of course, advocate for regular committee meetings. And I'd also say that Rob Buchanan is already an alternate to the planning board that was approved just a few months ago, unanimously, I believe, and I would not object to approving him tonight if people had, wanted to save time. That's just my own opinion.
Move to approve.
Councillor Ba moves to approve what?
Rob Buchanan.
Councillor Ba moves to approve the appointment of Rob Buchanan to the planning board. On that, councillor Niedergang?
Uh, yes, thank you, I would support that. Let's do it.
All right.
Okay, I'm thrilled that somebody else wants to be chair of my committee, let's go for it.
People have the right to make a motion to approve, councillor Rosetti, and this is a time-saving effort for a guy that has been on the board and was only approved just a few months ago. Any discussion on the confirmation of Rob Buchanan to the planning board? Here are none, please call the roll.
This is a roll call vote on the appointment of Robert Buchanan to the planning board. Councillor Niedergang.
Yes.
Councillor White.
Yes.
Councillor Ballantyne.
Yes.
Councillor Ewan Campen.
Yes.
Councillor Davis.
Should have been there in the first place, yes.
Councillor Strezzo.
Yes.
Councillor Klingon.
Yes.
Councillor Mbah.
Yes.
Councillor Scott.
Yes.
Councillor Rosetti.
Yep.
And councillor McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Mr. President, all eleven councillors have voted in favor of that appointment, that appointment has been approved.
All right, the remaining items will refer to the confirmation of appointments committee.
Thank you. And then, Mr. President, on items 102 and 103, we can waive and refer to committee, and those will be heard on the 20th.
All right, councillor Rosetti moves to waive the readings of items 102 and 103, or refer them to the finance committee.
But, Mr. President, do you mean 101 and 102?
Uh, I guess. I'm getting delirious myself, 101 and 102, refer to confirmation of appointments.
Very good. That brings us all the way up to item number 109, which is communication from the director of SPCD requesting to appear with the mayor's office before the committee on confirmation of appointments and personnel matters to discuss granting special municipal employee status to certain boards and commissions.
Any discussion? Here are none, this item is laid on the table, and this item is referred to copy, a copy to the confirmation of appointments committee.
Very good. Mr. President, we've gone through the agenda, we only have, to my knowledge, two late items.
Okay.
The first is a resolution submitted by councillors McGlaughlin, Strezzo, and Scott that the administration consider community development block grant funding to combat rodent infestation in East Somerville.
This item is laid on the table for approval and referred to the rodent committee. Councillor Ewan Campen, did you have a comment?
Yeah, sorry, Mr. President, I think I spaced out, the license and permits number 110 and 111, can you just tell me what happened with those? I was hoping that they'd be approved tonight.
Did we read those, Mr. Clerk?
Mr. President, they were read as, as the, all of the license and permits that were before the, this body were read earlier.
Okay, they're up for approval tonight, just confirming?
Yes.
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you.
Mr. President?
Councillor White.
Thank you, I think we should have a kitty set up for certain incidents, and I'd like councillor Ewan Campen to be the first one to contribute $5 to the kitty.
Okay, and he has second shift on the porta potties.
Even better.
All right, next item, this is that, last item is referred to the rodent committee. All right, next item, this is that, last item is referred to the Rodent Committee.
That item was approved or referred to Rodent Committee. The last item is merely the resubmission of a junk dealer's license application for Tosh Enterprises. The item was approved for a one-month period by the committee, so this is returning the item to the committee for its consideration for the remainder of the license year.
Okay, so this item, any discussion on this item? Here are none. The item is laid on the table for approval.
Actually, it's to be referred to the Licenses and Permits Committee, I believe, Mr. President.
Licenses and permits, thank you. The hour is 11:11. All right, any further items?
I am not aware of any further items before the council this evening.
All right, let's take up all remaining items off the table and move to approve. Roll call vote.
Here we go. This is roll call vote on the motion to approve item numbers 3 through 7, 10 through 18, 21 through 29, 31, 33, and 34, 38 through 41, 43, 48, and 49, 56 through 82, 88 through 91, 93 through 94, 103, and 110 to 111, plus the, the three late items that were submitted by Councilors Ballantyne, Niedergang, and McLaughlin.
All right.
And placing on file items 19 and 20, 52 through 55, and 85 through 87.
All right, roll call vote.
On that motion, Counselor Niedergang.
Yes, sir.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Ballantyne.
Yes.
Counselor Ewan Campen.
Yes.
Counselor Davis.
Yes.
Counselor Strezzo.
Yes.
Counselor Klingon.
Yes.
Counselor Mbah.
Yes.
Counselor Scott.
Yes.
Counselor Rosetti.
Yes.
And Counselor McLaughlin.
Yes.
Mr. President, all 11 councils have voted in favor of that motion. All of those items have been disposed of as read.
All right, see no further business before us. Counselor Ba moves to adjourn. Let's call the roll on adjournments.
On adjournment, Counselor Niedergang. Counselor Niedergang.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Ballantyne.
Yes.
Counselor Ewan Campen.
Yes.
Counselor Davis.
Yes.
Counselor Strezzo.
Yes.
Counselor Klingon.
Yes.
Counselor Mbah.
Yes, please.
Counselor Scott.
Yes.
Counselor Rosetti. And Counselor McLaughlin.
Yes.
Mr. President, all 11 councils have voted in favor of adjournment.
All right, we are adjourned. Good night, everybody.